The meeting go order.
Hello, and now we're going to get some motions here to accept something through the minutes for special meeting on November 5.
Need a second back.
On the November 2nd special.
Seconding and things further than these. All favors say aye.
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 Motion to approve non-public meeting, November 5.
Second. Motion made seconded anything further? All in favor say aye.
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 This is.
Motion for special meeting on November 8.
Just want to make note, Megan, that Mimi Delaney was also one of the attendants. Mimi Delaney.
Who was that?
She said.
I could only record those who identified themselves. Motion made seconded to approve this special meeting minutes in November 8, 2024 is amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda.
Motion to accept agenda.
Second. Anything further, Michael?
No, so I'm asking the board to approve the warrant, but you don't have it yet. Should be finalized tomorrow by the middle of the day.
Come by and sign it.
Yep.
Motion made seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public input.
Ah. Please on the, you know, the wrong words.
We can do that public input. It's like an agenda item.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Public input is for you to tell us things or ask us questions.
Right. I'm just going to ask you where the money came to do that.
Mostly from the town, mostly from the town hall improvement expendable trust fund.
So we're 41, right?
Uh, then there was an additional 11 that got approved at the special meeting on Friday. Yes.
Yes.
I would like to acknowledge and thank our police for their efforts in drawing the bridge. It has not gone unnoticed. I greatly appreciate it. I've been sending the cheap pictures and he has been getting that. He's been contacting different people who are using the bridge that shouldn't be.
Correct.
And I myself have witnessed a few times now, different stops in front of the house and they make people turn around. I think that's fantastic.
I do.
I should meet it. We still have, I was just gonna get someone to take a memory card tonight before I come over. And there's still a lot of big stuff going on there. The year round isn't good enough to read all of the question numbers. That's a long, we also better. So, I mean, I had a picture of a school bus coming through, but I can't read on the side of the bus what district they're from. So I'll just keep sending pictures. We use my rent plan and background. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Great.
Mr. Huttler almost made a citizen's arrest out there. He thought someone was going for the.
Not quite as quick as we used to.
There's a lot of things on his brain sheets. When you're here, you're like, where did you think you're going? So you have a bad relationship that we get about.
Check out. What's that? Lot, lot actually. The mind is willing.
The will was there, but.
Anybody on Zoom? No. Any other public input? If not, wait till the end.
I shot. Hello.
So I guess there's only like two major things that I'm looking at. I changed from last year. One would be eliminating that seasonal facility wage position and bringing in assistant. Just have somebody with me like 30 hours a week. That's top proposal type idea. For someone to actually also be the base of the programs and be around and answer community questions and be more available to the public. Take a flash that is stronger than that change than another one.
Which one is that?
That would be the second one, which is instead of the seasonal facility wage.
Oh, so you're, you're looking, you're going from four roughly to 35?
Yes, but that would be eliminating the seasonal wage position of having that person be the field. So between me and the assistant director, we would take on all the field agents and things like that to eliminate that position. It would also eliminate two different camp leading positions as well during summer camp that would be replaced.
Which ones are those?
Those are in revolving fund for camp. All the camp wages are in revolving fund.
Well, you've got a lifeguard wage.
Those are the public staff for the beach.
Okay.
Just before we get too far into the weeds, maybe just a brief overview. So the rec department kind of has two budgets. It's got the general fund budget, such as the sheet that's here. And then there's also the revolving fund, which doesn't have, we don't appropriate a certain amount of money to it, but as income comes in, it can go to pay towards programs. So the, the big one is the summer camp, but also basketball, soccer, kickball, everything else they do. So I provided as informational, I think you have the copy. If not, I'll make sure you do. Uh, cause it's not, it's not a budget item, but it is kind of related to the department's operations and expenses. Do you think you have that one or no?
I don't.
I do.
So you don't, like you said, you don't, you don't budget for it, but like there's lifeguards here and then there's lifeguards there for the camp portion.
She, what, what's the offset? Ashley, just to all eyes, what's the offset?
So with that assistant director position, the band would be ready to pop set. Which is three, it'd be three different positions that it would be eliminating with can't leave positions getting closer. I don't have. I didn't get the wage breakdowns, hour breakdowns of like any of the fight the numbers with all the wages and stuff.
So how many hours would you be cutting and how late hours would you get?
I would be cutting. So in total, they would be 1,560 hours of that 30 hours a week. It would be eliminating two positions. And. 360 hours each and then another position where the seasonal director had been. I'd have to work at Laxers, but even the budget numbers for that position this year. Yes, for what was the budget plan for the last year?
So it'll be 2,000 plus the 720 or 2,000 altogether.
No, 2,000 would just be one of the positions we'd be eliminating. So then the two camp positions, it'll be the seven for me. Yeah.
So you'd be eliminating 2720 and replacing it with 15, 16?
Yes. But that would then also allow me, the second person where I'm now not pulling from public works to do things that require two people. A lot of the things I do is like movie lines and.
No, no, I'm just like, you're basically cutting the staffing in half.
Yes. Well, no, because those would be replacing just the people that will be there all the time, not just season.
Right, but if you had $2,700 and that's being eliminated and you're replacing it with 1,500 hours.
I want to double check exactly what.
Because that's going in.
It was like, it was so the 2,900 was that they were budgeted for $2,000.
Basically, you know.
$2,000 or?
Yes, was the budget. That's why I had the 2,000. I was like, I don't really know the number. The total hours that they were at was 245. That number sounds a lot more.
Okay, so basically you're, you're going from roughly 1,000 hours for the, the three positions to 15, 16?
Yes.
Okay.
Only.
Sorry, I did not something I already.
And I had it. So it's in the packet. So it's page 13. So it is a smaller version, but you have it in the packet.
The readers.
Too bad.
Now can we?
So I can read it to you.
Can we move anything from the operating budget to the revolving fund? To kind of equalize it?
I don't think it's at a point where, so because Ashley's been more effective at staffing the program, uh, we were over the expense um, portion. So I don't think we want to spend, send it more expenses there right now, but we have tried to put stuff that is, um, offset by revenue into the revolving fund.
Except for this position.
Well, I'm thinking part of our thought process is it'll help the revolving fund break even.
How does that happen?
Because like she was saying, like some of the camp lead positions maybe won't be needed and those have been funded out of the revolving fund.
Oh.
You find somebody who wants to do something full time, you're going to get more experience, be able to handle a higher ratio of children versus somebody who may admit that's new. I need to spend more time on training and things like that and may not be able to handle a higher ratio of kids, which is hard when we get more eyeballs on the kiddos.
What is, what is the acronym in the second line? What, what does that mean?
What is the acronym?
Well, I'm assuming SEAS is seasonal, but then there's FACIL.
Seasonal facility, seasonal facility improvements or whatever.
It was MTC staff wage.
It was originally, the line item was called seasonal facilities management wages is what it was labeled last year.
Okay, but that, that's the line item that you're putting this position in.
Just until we, because we didn't change, we haven't changed the title yet, because if it's not something we're going to go forward with, we'd rather not change the title if it's not going to happen. So we could either just be part.
That's where, that's where it is.
Correct.
I, I definitely think you need the help for sure.
Yeah. And then that can also put my plan with that position to be there. Somebody would be at the town hall, kind of 15 hours a week to be, it'd be me or them to be available to help with registration and answer questions. Be able to meet with the community members, really get out and talk to more businesses and work on more sponsorship opportunities. We'd love to start a scholarship fund for summer camp. So that'll just take some time to get out and chat with people.
Would this person come from, do we have now upgrade or would this be a new person brought in?
I think that's all about however we hire our hiring process.
TBD. What's the hourly on this?
I think we added up 20 or 22.
2175 was the original proposal.
And are we likely to get someone?
I'm hoping so.
We have a lot of department heads hoping.
But there's out there and see the bikes. I have a few people that I've talked to for like parents and stuff like that. I mentioned that we announced that. People would be interested. A lot of people are seeing what we're doing and are really ready to start supporting and getting more stuff into the town.
Yeah. No, I, I'm fully supportive. Just.
You won't have any issue finding somebody for it.
Yeah. Good.
Gonna find somebody who wants to deal with the energy.
That's not easy.
Ask your husband. Ask husband. Heaven loves him. I couldn't be told.
You're welcome to stay longer.
I am. I always ask. The only other major increase as you look down kind of through stuff, um, from previous years was we added in a dumpster at Brown. Um, obviously public works, I was dealing with this same thing. Everyone is sort of staffing and things like that. And the trash removal there has kind of been an issue this year.
How are we doing with cameras?
They're working great. I love watching the team drive by and we then. Especially at night because the lights turn on now.
But they're not.
They're not doing anything. They know where they are now. I think they're just like, you can see them cruising through in different directions. I don't know where they're going now. They're not there.
But they're not damaging our property.
Yeah. Hopefully they're going to go away from the bridge too.
Yeah.
It's very, very hard with a trimmer.
Where do we spend plumbing money from? Kind of what?
That is.
What is that?
So that's over at Brown. So we have a brown sewer, brown water, and then we put a porta potty at the boat launch on Swansea Lake for the residents. I have breakdowns. We like to see which they host.
In, uh, in your IT support?
That is for the MyRec system program that you use for all of our registrations, which has been working great to get things moving smoothly along with just, um, twin bridges. The other one that's part of that, but the subscription from MyRec is $2,800 a year.
So do you think you're allocating, if you look to what you utilized in 23? And you're three quarters of the way through this year and you're basically allocating next year, what you spent through September?
Yeah, because all the invoices have been paid. It's not like a monthly expense. She just pays one of the, a portion of a quarterly bill. The MyRec is a one-time or rec desk, whatever it's called. It's just a one-time payment. So she's, won't have any more expenses.
So, so through September, that's it?
Yeah.
Great.
The only thing she talked about potentially.
Just saving 500 bucks.
Yeah.
It's good. That goes towards your position.
I'm trying.
Yeah, was a tablet case, right? So I figured she can handle that out of this year's budget.
Yeah. Some keywords not then to be around small children. That's my house. My handy hand is off by a thread.
So is that electricity for Browns and?
I hope you want to see the breakdown.
Yeah, just to carry out. She was that fundamental, both classes alike.
Well, no, so that's, um, lane, which is the maintenance tower over at 122th Road and then the cook shack. Those are above the coverage above. We have the bath house, um, over at Richardson Park and then the main pavilion and then Browns lights for the in deal and just all of the structure lights there. And so there's five different things that go into that one.
Right. And did I understand that I heard that, um, the rights of the field, they are costly. I see that. That we are going to start charging the teams when they want to play at night.
Oh, they do already.
They do already. It went up in price.
Yes, it did. It went up last year, but we didn't see anyone use the fields this year. Um, but we've had a lot of people come back with interest to use the fields. The men's league is very much working to get back on the fields.
Yeah, because I understood that that didn't go too good with the, with the teams and because it was quite a bit of a job.
Yes. Well, no, it, it went up $5 or one.
$5.
It was, I think $85 and went up to 100. Yeah, it wasn't a big job.
That's all right.
I don't know for sure, but it was, so it was previously, this was kind of one of those old school, small town things where the Brown Field Committee was kind of a quasi governmental group that was managing the field for many years. And because it was a town property, we wanted to take it under more kind of direct town management. Uh, so actually set up the structure. So I think, I think they had different deals, you know, where they were managing it. Um, so we're just trying to bring consistency and they didn't like it, which was unfortunate, but we, it was fine for us because we were losing so much money turning on the lights that I think we made more money by not renting out as much and it was available. So.
Yeah. So actually in 2023, when they did use the fields, I charged them $90 for an evening. I only went up to $100.
Okay. And so that means to me, it sounds to me though, that hundred dollars wasn't even covering it. We were losing money.
We were still losing.
We're still losing money, right?
Right.
That, so.
So that's something.
Plan for 2024, if they were to use the property at the rates they were using for 20 or at the rate I want for 2024, we didn't ever use for 2023, we were going to, um, break even at a dollar rate. For 88 cents. With like all the expenses for like the bath house and stuff like.
Right.
How these plans are often really expensive.
In the cook shed, the cookhouse now, what is that used for electricity? Well, that seemed pretty high too. Is that, do they, people pay for that? How's that? He said, oh, who does?
The cook shack is ran by.
It's run by power. Nothing to do with those and, but we maintain it?
Yes.
Okay, that's a lane field.
That is a lane. So.
I think it's one of them.
Oh, okay.
Oh, so yes. I was gonna say that cook shack, that one's over at Lane, because that has a separate, where they can use ball field is. The cook shack over at Brown is like closing down in 2019. We don't have the three bay washroom in that area.
But that can't be used? So that's when it slows down significantly?
Okay. Like the bathrooms are still usable. We still use all that for storage and stuff, but that cook shack area, I think actually the entire time I've been driving.
Is that what they're broken into? We had it. Um, that was another.
That was the, no, it was the storage unit behind the cook shed. There's like three sections to it.
Okay.
That are kind of divided by the cement inside of it.
Okay. And these plans were over there anyway. So there's no sense addressing that until we see the new plans and, right?
Yes.
I got you. I'll question you though.
Yes, the cook shack was a very large expense, but we have, we're going to agree with Carrigan where they do pay back if those are bought as, which is their main season of them using it. The rest of the time, any of the lights are ever being used down there or just the safety lights that we have around the building that we have on most of the buildings.
I mean, because we maintain it and they use it.
And name for it.
And they improve it. You should see what I'm going to bring in with the proposal. Actually, we can be on the 24th of November.
Yeah, that's what I'm used to. Cause I've got some guidelines that we're not working for them. And then, you know what I mean? That's why I was just in office.
Uh, it's just.
That's fantastic with me. I had it now.
Put, uh, four new dugouts this year and have four more that have been working as a year.
Beautiful.
They've done amazing work down there this year.
It's great.
How you want to pay for the 33,000?
So Michael worked his magic. He's got to figure it out, but I. We need to do it.
Do you think we can move something to the other fund and maybe should we pay for the lifeguards out of that or something that's?
Because I. Who you say it's in both?
It's in both. So we try to have a, we thought of the general fund as the baseline. The directors wages are going to be what they're going to be, whether how many programs we have or not. The lifeguards for the public beach are what's funded out of the general fund, the, the lifeguards at the camp, which is like a separate part of the property.
Or in the revolving.
Or in the revolving fund, because there, there's revenue that comes in to offset that. So we've tried to keep the stuff that's not supported. Otherwise you're just going to drain the fund, which is fine, but long-term, it's not sustainable to put expenses that aren't going to cover, be covered by revenues in the revolving funds.
When I first came out, I had said that with Teresa, and we've kind of gone through and went, what is program related and what is more reject, direct operating expense and kind of work them out a little bit more. Cause we did move the camp wages to that fund at that point, because it originally was up in the main.
I think it would be helpful to know what the offset is and, and also what additional revenue will be driven by, by that person. And that would.
My plan is more around two of me.
Pretty cool, man.
Should we get a lot of?
Anything for us?
I do. I would like to invite Sean to our 10th annual, so we're on the Christmas. It'll be on the first Saturday in December, which is the 7th. I would love to, if any of you would love to come in and recreate our slide right last year, which was the night before Christmas. I don't know. Are you be interested again this year or if you all want to?
Just help to?
Who gets the?
Stand this soon on?
But yes.
Yes. You just up and they need to pay.
Well, usually it's the new selectmen.
So Ken had done it for many, nine years and then Sean came in.
Off start.
But you don't need to give me an answer yet. I'll email you long. But I would love if one of you are interested.
Thank you for being like.
Absolutely.
What do you think? Coaching, sir?
Um, there will be.
Look, great.
I could work on it.
Wouldn't say reindeer.
Before.
You have reindeer?
No.
Let's reconsider that whole discussion.
Yeah, sorry. I.
Do you think, I'm serious though. Do you think you could have that next week?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, I can definitely get you all that right here. I've learned all of it. It's just me putting it all in the ones is more of that.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Is that next?
Chief Joe.
Oh, Joe. I got him right on top there. Says Chief Joe. Let's hear him.
What do you have for us?
Good evening.
So the bureau of this fiscal year is budget. And here's that we're going to be friends with, in the chair. Sounds good. I don't know if you have any questions about this year's. I just.
When you say this year, you mean the 2025 proposed?
No.
Or the 2024?
Any questions? Expenditures and wherever you add, we're definitely going to be on your budget.
So with regard to staffing, it seems like those are, you're definitely well on your budget on staffing. So, well, obviously that's not a good, it's a good thing, but it's not a good thing. What do we, have you been working with Megan or taking any other approaches to try to increase awareness and?
Yes.
What, what do you think?
Very diligent. She's advertised opening positions in different venues. Uh, we've also attended a, uh, hiring fair in Nashua. We had a few interested people, but like stable. I think that's where you get more big for a buck.
What, what do you find is the, the major points of resistance that other than the fact that everybody's looking for staffing?
Everyone's, I can move pressure point. I could apply in order to get a few more candidates. I would, but it's, it's difficult. I think it's mostly the environment of today. It's a lot of factors that place the best. This way people to pursue this occupation. I can understand why. It's not something I think most people would enjoy to do. Uh, it takes a certain person to do this job. And those are undefined.
I think we kind of live in a bubble. Which in, in ways that, well, we're impacted macro in a macro way. Locally, we, we don't have that, that same pushback that other communities have experienced, which is part of what leads to the challenge of, of having young people or, or people from the service transition into law enforcement. So it's hard and I was hard for me to appreciate what goes on in other parts of the country and recognize that it impacts us. So.
Yeah, we're very fortunate with you. So I don't take that for granted at very least, but we've been a few different places.
So what, what do you think? What, what could we do in terms of incentives or compensation or training or what, what do we need to do to rise and, and make ourselves a welcoming place and one that, a destination that where people, you know, candidates want to, want to appear?
Well, I don't think it's civil bull and it's out there that we can fly, but I think reviewing what some stocking salaries are across the nine, nine region, I think we're behind her. I don't think we're at a mark at most far.
And we're, you're, you're working on that, right? You guys?
Yeah.
You have some numbers that you might can take a look at.
And how, how are the other communities? What, what's the experience that they're having when you talk to the, you know, your full colleagues around the, the county?
I think they realize also it's, it's the climate, it's the environment. It's so difficult to attract good candidates.
Go, can I ask you a question on this? On all these towns is which ones are union? Jaffrey? Is that it?
Did Jaffrey, uh, I know they are.
Who else?
I would suspect probably a couple of others that are in larger.
Does anybody know?
Peterborough, New Boston, probably. I'm not positive.
You both definitely. Jaffrey definitely, right?
And, and this, the pay rate that you've listed for each of these communities, that's for someone, that, that's one particular pay, pay grade or one level of qualification that's consistent.
Okay, most of our insights highlighted as one year because I couldn't get any interest. And these are somewhat moving targets. I think a lot of these communities do adjust here and there, depending on. Might lock in the door.
But to be honest with you, I thought that's from, from since I've been sitting in the seat, I mean, I don't think we've ever hired anybody yet. That setting pay we got written down. I mean, am I right? I mean, I don't believe we were setting anybody at that pay.
The one.
We've always, we've always talked about it, right? The last couple.
A couple of years.
Yeah, the one uncertified we hired that believe is making like 53,000 a year.
Basically, it was from thirty to twenty five dollars, right? And and it looks like we're at the bottom. And the top is New Boston. And the population of the top is six thousand. Or it's seventy five hundred. So when a police officer goes out to look for a job and he's gonna look for a town, you think that's who he looks at? You think he goes, well, what town started with more money? Do you is that how it goes? Like, if I was gonna be a police officer, would I look around and say, I'm gonna go to a town? Or do you go to the town and you just say, this is the town I'm gonna live in? You I mean, I'm trying to figure out how is this gonna affect us if we get there? Is it gonna be a bigger fact, you know, by us chasing other towns with money? Is basically what we're gonna do here is try to get with the other towns, right?
Doctor respectfully, the uncertified officer or certified officer was transferred.
Okay, that's a big difference, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uncertified.
Uncertified. So those a few are run between initially, they're just looking at starting price. Some of these young people, most of them are young. I don't know really what job they're getting. And they're trying to peel things up. When they do get someone like that, I tried to inform them I'm not rates versus maybe key state police. We just very different environments in each of those ages. So I try to present perspectives and how we are great, why we choose like us.
Well, since I've been sitting here, I'll tell you, all I've heard is we know service in this town, we need to help. We help with fire and police is gonna be huge. What I see is the infrastructure of this town going in a great direction. These guys are working so hard and bridges and all this file. It's getting nervous now because a lot of people are coming to town. We need to fix the service end of this and which is the police. And since I've been sitting here, I've heard a lot about this, that we're low, we're low, guys complaining. To me, I think we should fix it, put that to rest. Now we can't use that reason. We eliminate that reason. That's gone. Because it's the biggest reason I've heard sitting here is money, right? So if we're gonna really try to investigate what the problem is, I think we're gonna start eliminating what what we think is the problem. So we can put it to bed. And if this is the problem, I'm gonna vote that or I'm gonna suggest that we get where we need to be for starting rates like everybody else around here. Now they can't use that no more. Now we can say that ain't the cause of this. There's another reason. So you know what I mean? So that's how I feel about this because that's all I've heard is it's it's a money issue. So since I've been sitting there. So I really think we really should look at this and get us where we need to be and we can put that to rest. And then I now we're still in the same situation. It isn't that. I'm gonna hire you guys soon.
Megan, how far have you gotten or have you guys worked on what what a change at this level would do for the other the other officers in terms of of adjustments?
You know, yesterday with Mike and talked a little bit about that and the starting salary. I don't know that. I think we decided on a smaller number to bump them up a little bit, starting, right?
We were looking at, we weren't looking at hourly, we were looking at annually at fifty three to fifty six. But then, yeah, you have to get to make sure everyone else gets adjusted that you're not starting the new people higher close to what the people that are certified have experience of. So if we could get an idea of what the starting rate that the board is comfortable with, then we could come back with a little more detailed what the total consequence would be.
How much you had to pack the budget?
That's what I'd I'd like to crunch the numbers on that once I got an idea of where you're thinking for starting. What what's on his sheet here is just the it's just the level. We haven't done any changes.
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna question. Uh, we're talking about two levels. You want a certified and you want this uncertified. Um, what's the current one for the uncertified? Seven twenty one? I'll be how about the certified?
It's kind of the goal.
And there
Twenty twenty nine, right? Done. It would be in that ballpark for pretty many of your experiments.
Would would twenty five for uncertified and thirty for certified? Were that track you on track it number?
No, we're we're what what we have now is we're twenty five for uncertified. And and the chart that we have in front of us shows Jeffrey, it's almost thirty one and then everybody else in between for for uncertified. And then in slide mid, Joe mentioned that the certified officers come under different negotiation and whatever level that they're at in their experience. So thi- this is purely starting
Okay.
from scratch.
And I think what we gotta understand is like Michael says is that we go and boost this up. It's a snowball effect where we gotta think of the guys that were there before. And now we gotta make sure we keep them, you know, any fear of the guy that was there for two years. And now this guy goes way right up where he is. So it's if you're my right, Mike, he's saying this. And now we go with just him, right, Joe?
Yes, sir.
And so there's a snowball effect here. So I mean, they really have to crunch and look at the numbers to do this, but
No, it's there's no, so good officers paying a little bit more and more money than they'd be chasing after employees all the time. They get nothing to save money.
You're saying in the long run? Yeah, I I agree. I I just think that um I do. We just hear this a lot. And I think we I think this is our first step to like Bill asked, you know, Bill's wondering, why is this happening? And I don't know how to go about it. We don't really know, but we can eliminate the things that we do here, right? To go the other way where they won't take it.
This is the problem that's across the nation. Everyone is depleted. They're working skeleton crews.
Well, by you saying that now makes me think, why we why are we worried about this time?
Because we wanna be competitive. I don't think we wanna be on the back end of that curve. I think this town deserves to be somewhere in the middle. I don't have to be at the very top, but I think
Makes sense.
I think we should be somewhere in the middle.
It seems like we're on the budget. It's we gotta shut up. That's as loud as it. I don't know how to even start that.
It's a window right there.
So it's a window. I'd be glad to do that.
Did you also take a look at where we are compared comparably with other communities with the sign on?
Uh, bonus. Now we're pretty much, we went from five thousand, ten thousand. Uh, so I think we're comparable. I mean, there's still agencies that are offering twenty thousand.
Sure, and thirty.
Yeah, but my understanding now on that is that we do put a lot of incentives out there that maybe these guys ain't using. I mean, I was looking into it and there's a lot of incentives. Am I right? To to do
Yeah.
that ain't being used. So we
Or they're being or they're being used, but they're not. They still look at what their base pay is and they think of it.
That's right, Michael. I think the incentives are of not being looked at in what they pay because I looked at some of those. And there's some beautiful incentives that I don't. I'm not sure if these other towns really have what we offer them. I think we're pretty pretty good in the incentive plan of this. I do. I don't know. What do you think, Megan? What you say?
I think it is. I think we offer a lot of backend incentives that people aren't aware of. Um, in the SHRM meeting today, we talked about the value of doing complete budgets page. So that's something I'm gonna work on for every department because especially with our full timers, we have really great insurance and that costs money across the small amount of money that our employee is in more for the town. But that in itself has a dollar sign. And so to put everything together on one page, they can see what their total package is worth.
We offer a very competitive insurance buyout, which a lot of police officers take advantage of.
That's what I'm saying. That maybe these guys ain't aware of looking at that because, and on the other hand, they're young, like you said, and they're looking at that dollar figure and not looking at the insurance and this incentive or that incentive. That might be a good thing to put it in front of them and say, this is what we're offering you, you know? I think that's great and the incentives that we do.
So you're looking at twenty eight or twenty nine?
Could we be great?
Can we reach that, Mike? Is that
Sure, with enough money, we can do whatever you want.
Well, when you think about we're shot handed, if he's running a a police force that we're supposed to have thirteen men.
That would be good too.
And our average is twelve. Twelve, twelve, and we're running at eight, nine?
Nine.
Nine. Okay.
Well, actually.
And we've been at that for how long?
Too long.
Too long.
A couple of months.
Wow. And and and
Being being under in this year, like you said, is not good, but it's good. It's good for the money wise, but we budget for next year based on assuming all those positions get filled. So that we're understaffed now doesn't help us for next year.
Correct.
So when we look from year to year, which is what the voters approve, if we whatever new starting rate we we pick and then how that potentially adjusts everyone else. It it is gonna impact next year's budget.
It is.
No matter how much we're under in twenty
I bet you one.
Could you have that number for next week?
If you tell me what you want the new starting rate to be.
I think Billy hit it. I think Billy said it.
Well, we also have a problem with overtime. In in the sense that you have staff that are unwilling to take on overtime, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, they're not very eager. Um, and we got a gentleman that's bragging Friday. He seems to be very interested in overtime. So one person can make a difference in a time of this size.
We spent fifty eight thousand dollars of our eighty thousand dollar overtime budget through September, so.
But but again, that there's there's additional overtime because of the reduced staffing, so that that eighty thousand should have been higher because we're substantially below on full time salaries.
Or it would have been lower if we had full time salaries and not overtime working to back fellowships.
I hundred percent agree. I'm just asking if we're we're not only short staffed, but we're running up against resistance to take on the additional overtime. So it's 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 doubly important to try to, I I'm just getting it. Whatever we can do, I agree with Jim, whatever we can do to encourage people to apply here and join us.
But yeah, I wasn't trying to scratch. I was trying to point out because I've heard that that no one works overtime, but just fifty eight thousand is not
Not that no one works.
Fifty eight thousand is just September. That's
Through September.
Through September. It's just that there's additional overtime opportunities that aren't being utilized and and can't blame people for that.
But I you you scheduled now with three twelves and a four, right?
For the most part.
For the most part. How's that working out with the new schedule? Are they liking that?
Three flights in the form. On tour. Yes.
Yeah. I talked to a few and they seem to be all right with it. So it's a tough thing.
Yeah, I mean, I'm working eleven hours a day.
I know that.
Most part, ten days a week.
Aren't you putting in the most overtime on the volume? That's what I thought. But you signed up for that, right?
Hey, that's what's on the dotted line. Really read my contract.
What do you think? See what the numbers come back. No, but I'm just in terms of getting giving them a starting point so that they can run the numbers. How do you feel about twenty nine? It it gets us above. If if we go at twenty eight, we're still in the lower tier. We're we're below
Just above Chesterfield too, so it's
Yeah.
Not too bad, Billy, because you got one, two, three, four, five, in the twenty eight areas out of eleven. So we're gonna be in a good area if you go that height. We're gonna be amongst four company, four towns, the twenty nine out of the eleven. Twenty nine might be a little high, but it's gonna be very attractive. If that's where you're gonna go with it.
I'm just putting it out there.
I know.
It's the majority. I think so. I think twenty eight fifty keeps us below too many towns, or twenty nine puts us, as you said.
I think we should be at twenty eight fifty. I do.
There you go.
I think that puts us right in the middle of the sea pot. And I think it actually puts us sixty percent, seventy percent in that area what I'm looking at.
You can look three different times.
Oh, no, no, you're getting one.
For uncertified?
Once you you can also plug in.
No, for uncertified officers.
Right. Once they get certified back on the twenty five.
They don't do that.
But again, for the first five years, it's twenty and then they
Why do you feel that?
No, no.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, and that's just attached there right now. I I think it would be good for a deliberative session if you if you need more, if you to increase that makes more money for, you know, this update and also for overtime that's to some things like twenty two of the NBA grades because as far as I'm concerned, which protection in this town is it's good and we need to keep it that way. And I'm sure I'm only talking myself, but I'm sure a lot of people, they won't let at least get
Yeah. Department heads get a chance at the deliberative session to sell their case to the general public.
Yeah, but we are selecting to to support that idea in that deliberative section. I think they wanna hear what we feel too. And and me, I think this is where we need to put concentrate is him and the guys back there. Yeah.
That's one point. Sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
Jay Ward and Mike you're talking about.
Talking about two fire. I'm talking about two firemen.
I was just gonna make one point. Mike and some of those towns might increase some uh
Oh, yeah.
offerings as well. It was the same time here.
Usually what happens?
We need you. That's my first guess.
What else, Joey?
What's involved in what's involved in running the numbers at twenty eight fifty? And thirty in terms of, is it something that's relatively quick that you could do through a spreadsheet? Or is it something that's gonna take an extended period of time?
No, I think it's just changing the numbers on the spreadsheet that Teresa provided, right?
Well, it's just to me, it's just the balancing part between the different because we have, you know, what people are making now and some people are close to each other. So you wanna kind of try to keep them close. And so I don't, we can do multiples if it, if you think that's helpful.
But I think when you come back, we're we're looking at a cap and and trying to figure out how we're helping reduce it. But uh, so I I agree with Mark. I think thirty, we can always back it down. It would give us a a best case, worst case.
We we're not confused. We're asking for the look at it thirty in the twenty?
Not just thirty, but the slide's asking for twenty eight fifty, so.
I think it's
Well, we'll bring something that can be modified or something. We'll figure something out.
So you wanna go right to the top?
Still isn't really at the top.
We're talking about union places too, you know?
I'm a little bit in Boston, but anyway. New space works here.
Dean's uncertified is around thirty. Sixty three thousand a year.
He wants to work there.
No, I'm just for reference. Yeah, I want it quite a bit.
Mike has a question.
Jimmy, just had kind of a point of reference on the union side of it. The first year of learning probation, so whatever that dollar now is, you know, making a decision. You have to be authorized to be followed to get into the union contract.
That's good too.
Thanks.
Thanks for pressing my bubble. I appreciate that.
Mini school cell phones. You're 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 basically uh, at your yearly. Cell phones, you're, you're basically, uh, at your yearly through September, so you're going to exceed it, not by a lot, but you're going to exceed it. Does it make sense to increase next year?
Yes, sir.
To what, we pay for cell phones for all the guys, what is it? For cruiser, each cruiser has a cell phone associated with.
Yes, not each cruiser, but I think it's six, I don't care, maybe seven. Six, I know, sir.
Are there all the phones being used?
The most part, yes.
And then recruitment. Goes back to a question I had for fire chiefs in the past with regard to utilizing, uh, physicals, money being allocated, and then the money not being spent. So is there more, we, we've, we've used through September very little for recruitment, and are there plans that would, would warrant bumping it to twelve thousand?
The recruitment is primarily when we, if we pay off an officer's contract that's coming here.
Oh, so it's not actually soliciting?
Correct. I mean, might be, I think some is advertisements also, but the big, the big dollar amount in there is if we have to pay off a portion of someone's contract coming here from another agency.
Okay. Sorry, I still haven't, who you wanted to talk about then?
No, I was just wondering if it was going up, if he was buying more, so it's just a price.
Building maintenance, is that where the generator comes under that's outside that we have, did you ever fix that problem, or we still have that problem?
It was a program issue.
It was a program issue, so that problem's all, what's it bad? What about fencing? Didn't we need fencing around that?
That's been approached with C I P.
Oh, okay, good, so that's all handled?
Yes, sir.
Did, did you account in here for the discussion we had with, with C I P with regard to interior improvements, just on, just at a maintenance level, not?
There won't be any significant amount of like, we have to go with C I P for, uh.
But anything more in the, in your budget where we should be allocating?
Sometimes these things just sneak up on you in a second.
But anything, you know, I'm just, is right, I'm, I'm going back to the chair scenario.
So, yes, sir.
So.
We did purchase, uh, professional desks for the ladies in front, as we were working on that counter.
Yep.
Uh, which was not, uh, was very difficult. It was, you know, it was basically used designed for dispatch. And, uh, we didn't present a very professional appearance, so now the ladies have a real desk with drawers. They can put their files in it, in file cabinets, so, uh, I purchased a desk for myself. Uh, hopefully, maybe this winter, we'll put it together and we'll see how it looks.
Great.
Uh, we've got some work to do in my office as well.
Yes, we do.
Check some of those holes.
Kind of control that temper.
Oh, that was way before I got there.
That whole new room that you designed with the guys, when you bring the shunnings in, you said?
That's been completed.
That's nice, come out good. You happy with it? Is it working what you wanted it to work as?
So we have a life-saving machine in there now. That's great, great. So, eh, D E W, I can't give them enough.
They helped out quite a bit.
They did a great job.
They're good, they're good guys.
Very much so.
Lucky on that end of it.
Very much, yeah.
Was there anyone, any one time expenses with the I T? Support and with service contracts? Is there anything coming online with service contracts that drives next year?
Pretty much was the condition that we had in previous fiscal years, for our G M S or policies, which is a true great asset for me, because I'm the one who should write these policies, use it. It helps you pass those on to the officers and maybe your electrical, uh, electronic signature on it, so you know the guy. Um, and you can update the policy very easily on that as well. But other than that, that's building new service contract, uh, that we add into that.
Think that might have been a typo doing seventeen thousand for both lines, because I, I don't recall a significant increase to the service contract, so. Well, I'll check that while you keep going.
Wait, then?
Are you serious about ammo going out?
Four thousand bucks?
Yeah, I just think they bought more, getting ready for the war.
The other people are.
And they were getting ready for the elections, something, something like that.
So Joe, um, the new equipment, the line item for office, was that an unanticipated expense of thirteen thousand? Was that for the, the, the new desks?
Also very copy issues.
Stuff we had hoped to buy at the end of last year, that the invoices didn't come in until this year, but we're going to be in the same boat, so it's going to work out. But it was, it was intended to be end of year purchases, but the invoices didn't come when we hoped. But yes, it was a one time, it's not expected to.
Okay, so the thousand being allocated for twenty-five is.
Should be.
Then the, the new equipment department, excuse me, in, in twenty-three, you spent twenty. So far this year, you spent, or through September, you've spent twelve, and we're budgeting four. Is there, was there something ongoing that?
I think a lot of that money was used to purchase new holsters and equipment. I think these guys over here, every purchase, like in the forties, nine mil, nine mil is a less expensive ammunition versus a forty mil, um, which is somewhat expensive. We also purchased, uh, down sites. Now become popular, I'm a mobile guy, man, like six sites, but you have to go with the good trends. At least a doc, so it's what everybody's using nowadays, and we also purchased some flashlights, some weapons also, so they attach to the muzzle of the the fire. So that was an equipment that we purchased. Again, it's not, so several uh, weapons altogether, I think it was about nine, maybe ten firearms, so that's not going to be every year expenditure. Just a one-time purchase for the most part, we'll have to buy one or two as we go forward, but not ten or nine.
But you feel comfortable with what you're budgeting for, for next year?
We can work with the most burners.
What happens to the old ones?
Uh, some officers purchased their old weapons and others got turned in.
Each office is responsible for their weapons? When we buy it, Tom buys it, and then they turn it in when they leave?
Yes, sir.
When you give them the option, when you upgraded the guns, that they could buy their old one?
Yes, sir.
What's covered in building maintenance? As, as compared to what you're asking from C I P?
Um, building maintenance, I believe, is the upkeep of the building itself. Uh, we do have, uh, maintenance workers that come in twice a week, clean the building up, um, hopefully get some more wax, they haven't been waxed since I've been there. They've been kind of worn, uh, I think it was waxed up those, those tiles, um, paint, painting, uh, light fixtures, so you need improvement. Uh, Angel did a great job from the highway department to fix a couple of those without spending money, he's trying to put new fixtures in, uh, and we need more emergency lighting, those are very old. We replaced one or two, we've got to replace several of those.
So some of those items would be C I P, but waxing the floors, I think, would be routine maintenance. I, the only reason I'm asking the question is be, just making sure that the seventeen fifty you're requesting is adequate to do routine maintenance, uh, because if, if this year continues the way it is, you'll be at six thousand.
I think we're, is it adding things like full-time salaries?
Well, no, I understand, I agree with that.
Do some of these little projects because he has the money.
Yeah.
You know.
I'm, I'm looking forward to full staffing.
There's a little project.
Just asking Joe to be sure you're covered for.
I, I think we've done quite a bit of improvement already to buildings, uh, there's always room for more, uh, I can listen to that.
In the holes, waxing, well, okay.
Let's try to, so can come back down to ten thousand. That grass. Um, so. Um, so also usually put to the police department, oh, there it is, on the second, the county prosecutors. Um, so I stopped by the county office today to see if I could shake some cages. Yeah, it looks like it's actually going to be down a little bit, um, so we had budgetary carrying over the same amount. Um, but I think that can go to like seventy-three, seventy-four, so. I'll never tell. And then the other, broken up somewhat separately because the school district has been paying. It's the bulk of the expenses, we separately budget for the S R O position, uh, down here. So it was originally brought back a few years ago, we had hoped it could be a part-time position, someone semi-retired that wanted to do it. That never materialized, I don't think, I don't think we ever had a part-time candidate, um. So we've had a full-time S R O until this past, uh, year, when we've been too short-staffed to staff the position. But, so we were kind of making up the difference between the part-time, which is what we had kind of agreed to with them, not kind of what we had agreed to with them, and the full-time, which is what we were able to staff it with, um, but we told them if they're able to fund the full, full-time position, that would basically give us another full-time slot to try to, uh, fill. So we wouldn't, if we got lower staffing, we wouldn't have to pull it back. Um, so I don't know if the district has made a final decision if they're going to fund the full position, but I just bring that up as, as background, and so you know why there's that separate kind of side. It's a good program, it was beneficial, we hope to be able to bring it back.
They were very enthusiastic about the program. We were, we're doing it again, so hopefully we can bring it back next September.
How long did we do it for?
Two years.
And there's this last year, you told them we put it.
I believe that it sounds like they're utilizing the county sheriffs for the, for this year.
My initial conversation with them about that was that they had hesitation to do it, so maybe they changed their minds.
Maybe I can find information.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Jay Ward Fire Station Advisory Committee update.
Been able to look at the plans. Michael has them, I need a few, but copies of that. Yeah, these are something, he's just a good subject, John, he's not. So there are some of us here tonight from the committee, and we're basically here to answer some questions you might have about what people plan you are like and what you see there.
Get ready.
Two pages of plans here. And the site plan, we just got the site plan today, we just print those out, too. That's the elevation, this is the east elevation there.
This is, this is a great set from the building, right here?
No, no, you just, I'm sorry, you just. There's one bill, right? I've seen that. That's basically.
I haven't, I haven't checked my email.
Okay. It's probably. Well, if you can meet at one o'clock on Monday, so. I haven't had a copy.
I get scolded harshly if I give them small copies.
All right, so. Now, what am I looking at down below that?
You feel like you're standing over there.
Okay, looking down.
And so here's.
So I'll see that end, and that, there, right? So there's a door there and a door there.
Right. And you can see that on the, on the inside. Chad Green has had pretty many conversations with G O T, and they are amenable to the, the current cuts here. Looks like that's going to be maybe some lighter options. But there was one issue, as long as we have, uh, land site, but we had the current cuts for the other station proved, so I don't think there's a problem with that. Um, but we'll see, that's, they're looking at that, and then it's, it's, um, it's now in the, in the hands of of D E W, we will cost estimates, I understand, what you're understanding, too, Michael.
Correct.
That's happening now.
It's been happening.
It's been happening, but now they have a site plan that can.
Do you happen to know that, uh, you know, they're showing the lines of contour here, and these are the ones that are going to be done with this project? It looks like they're flattening now, or no?
I don't, I don't know if they're flattening the whole thing out.
It looks like they have, because you can see it drops off.
So we, this is the thing that, you know, if, if you can make the one o'clock meeting, if you have to, on Monday, we'll be, we'll be talking about. I know, Michael's capable, I don't know where it's responding yet, but this will be a little design subcommittee that we have, it's. We will get the track, so. Friendly wouldn't be there, who knows? We're looking at one o'clock on Monday.
So.
What questions about the plan, yeah?
Yeah, my first question, I'm, I'm acting like I'm showing up at the fighter department, I want to talk to somebody, I come in through the front door. Somebody sees me right here, right?
If, if somebody's in their office.
Okay, then they say, go in the waiting room, Jimmy, and there'll be someone else to see you. So I go in the waiting room, and I have to go to the bathroom, where do I go to the bathroom?
Right, we gotta go through the.
So I got to get on the hallway into the conference room. I go in the conference room, and then I go.
The reason the bathroom, you know, the majority of people using here need to have access to the bathroom, but they don't need to have access to the inventory.
It's also set there to consolidate all the plumbing in the building, like, right on the other side, the lockers.
I see that the bathrooms are dead, yeah. Well, just my concern was if we're having meetings in that big room, somebody's going to have to come right in the middle of the meeting, and we need to have that from that. But, but. I don't know if it was a private.
How many people are going to be coming in?
That's true, okay. I can, I agree with that, don't change everything around with something simple like that, right?
They get into a long talk with everything, so.
And where, where would Eric be here?
Probably that corner.
And there's going to be a couple of other offices over here?
And this could be a working office as well. Um, you know, we're looking at replacing the four offices that are in West. Um, whether, so that the upper level and the fire department has a place to be.
Can you walk us through the decon? How, how that?
Certainly, the idea is that when you come back from a fire, you gotta take your equipment off in here. And, um, if it's, if it's been. There he, it's gotta be clean and there's, there's a washing machine and something here, and there's also. In the next room, there's, there's other things that need to happen, there's a little shower in there and stuff like that. So you basically strip down and, and get yourself, get the equipment that needs to be cleaned, taken care of there before going into. The main area and going to your locker room to get to other stuff.
And that made it with a separate outside entrance there, so you don't ruin the building with the contaminated uniforms, I go right into that room.
Right, can. Do you get there?
Yeah, was there any discussion about enclosing that?
The enclosing the room?
No, enclosing so that when someone leaves, they, they leave their truck. Cause the, the door's right here, that instead of going outside and then back in, just enclosing it so that they.
Oh, I see, so it's part of that, yeah, we didn't discuss it, no. So yeah, it's part of the garage part of it, which is.
Yeah.
Certain that it would be enclosed.
I, I don't, I, I, I'm not a firefighter, so.
What are you, what are you trying to say, cause I'm confused, what do you mean, you wanna have somebody to go anywhere?
He's talking about.
Yeah.
They're outside.
Yeah.
There might be an issue with somebody who's leaving.
It might be, I mean, you know, not everyone is on that truck when they're coming in anyways, I would imagine, when they're getting out prior to.
That's what my. Well, let's ask a couple of firemen, what do you feel about what we're talking about?
It's not sure if I completely understand what you're talking about, but what I can tell you is this. If it's dirt or grime from a fire, you're gonna roast decon people before they even get anywhere close to the fire truck. You're gonna use the hose on the scene and launch them down.
Before you head back to the.
You don't wanna put that in the fire truck with all the other people that are in the fire. Second, the decon room where that came into play a lot in the past, in my past experience. Was, uh, when we started getting into the COVID type of stuff. Because then if someone had coughed on you, kind of, you were so panicked, you, you didn't want to be around other people, so you would go into there and, um. Someone already, the radio, hair clothes, you know, some other sort of clothes or whatever, you'd shower, do all your stuff. Um, and you cleaned up and then come out and you'd be decon. Um, as much as you possibly can. But the decon room, uh, isn't necessarily for someone that's gonna come out looking all charred and all that stuff from ashes all over them. For being on a fire, cause that should be going before you leave the scene. That's, it's more for, uh, showering, uh, it's more for if you're using straps. Uh, for longboarding someone or securing them to a stove, and they vomit on it or do something, and water exudes on it, you can bring them in there and clean them in there. So it's not just about the person, it's about some of the things that we may actually use.
So when you come back and most everybody gets off the truck while it's being back then, the majority would go into the regular locker rooms? So it'd be very rare that anyone would use the, the decon area?
More times than not, it wouldn't be used, you're not gonna use it every time you come back. You know?
So it's, it is a requirement.
It's a requirement, right? It has to be set or created in terms of the rest of the building, so you're not, you're not dirtying and cleaning part of the building.
It's just a functional question.
Yeah, no, if, if, you know, you, you think of it as someone that's got like insulation all over them or something like that, that stuff that'll be cleaned up prior. It's more, um, you know, if, uh. I think of it as a lot. You know, if you've got something on you directly onto you. I can go in there and clean that, so if you shower in there, clean, I like, decon missile from running it, you will go back and come back again.
Mr. Long, um, is that a state regulation?
I don't know, it's a state regulation, but it's like an FDA, National Fire Protection.
So.
Yeah. You have to, I, I don't think you'll find an intersection that doesn't have some. I answer you.
I couldn't open it.
Couldn't?
Oh.
You want your schedule at times.
That is empty space. That is the elevator to move stuff up, just like the one come home there. And this is a future bathroom, I can build a bathroom, yeah, and this is a future world that might be. And this is the, the movement area, there's also one of them. There's, there's a compressor up here and that rides the, um. In the old design, that was like saying four.
Jay, am I missing the second door, like an airlock from the. Garage portion of a multi-purpose room?
You're, you're not missing a, a second door, there, there isn't really a, an airlock needed here, I understand, it's just need to have a very, it used to be a.
Just one door.
Strong, this will be a, a main, a big door, I mean, this will be a fixed door, we're gonna be selling fireproof doors, I understand.
Well, I'm not, I'm just saying, keeping.
But that's the fire.
Diesel particulate and everything. I'm worried more about air coming in.
Yeah, I think the, uh.
I, I don't. I think it's more that they've rented up, where the refrigerant was like a higher pressure than the, than.
Right.
So it naturally goes out, there'll be some ventilation.
Now, I, I did send you folks links that apparently aren't working.
I'm just saying, I couldn't.
Okay.
By anybody else.
Uh, I couldn't, the files were too big to send on a, on a, uh. Email, so I, I had on here a flash drive that I can give to Michael's computer and you can download them and he can get them to you, or if you have a device here. But the, the thing is that. What we did, we did four videos that we thought of issuing sequentially to sort of sell this to the town. And, and to explain what's going on, and they're basically four PowerPoints with narration turned into a video. And I can hook up my computer and I can show you those tonight, or I can, uh, as I said, I can give it to, to Michael to, to get to you in some fashion. But they're, they're meant to be educational and there's one missing and that's one explains the cost. So the, what it does is it compares the old design to the new design, so. And so you might see that the rooms here in this firefight section are much smaller in this design than they were. Uh, you might see that the, um, you know, that we, we decided to go with a single bay here, it's. It reduces the paving that has to be there a whole lot, it, it, there are a bunch of things that we, we point out. So a lot of the, the reasons for this design, some of the reasons that we hope will make it a lower cost are all explained in these videos. So I really wanted you to see them, and if you had the time, I can hook them up on my computer, you can auto watch it if you'd like. About two or three minutes, each video is like two minutes.
I think you'd be great.
The only thing that Scott Howard was talking about too is, Route thirty-two really need to push to stay the last foot length. Thinking back to where I go with school bus, there are some, there probably gonna be kids, maybe, identity contracts. My concern is if I'm in a school bus, I'm gonna have children all of a sudden. See, the bus driver, not over a place coming along, like the whole back of the.
Alright, so. I lost time, I thought of my audience. But here's, we put this up here so we can see now, I think Michael may have valuable.
No, he says it depends.
Does butter have milk in it though?
Okay, so this is the.
I think so.
This is the first video, I'm waiting for Jimmy to get.
I can hear this thing. We had to.
Does anybody have figures on what all the architecture prices of our tenures have been? It's serious, I think that might be a selling point if everybody finds out.
Are you ready, Jim?
That we spent a hundred thousand dollars on architecture already. Who knows how much, I'm guessing.
Let me take it back here, I'm gonna start over again, it's.
Has been posed to voters of Swansea several times. While Swansea is in need of replacing fire station number two, which is housed beneath the town hall, the town has not been successful in getting a bond issue passed. It is for that reason, the select board has appointed a special committee to explore the options that are available. To address the reasons for its prior failure and to explore new ways to reduce overall cost. This series of postings will introduce the committee, its mandate, outline the committee's work this summer and fall. And present the committee's recommendation for a new station to replace station number two. Following this introductory post, there will be several postings to present how the fire station advisory committee. Has come to understand the need for a new station number two, the steps taken in selecting a location. And the work done to design a fire station that meets basic needs at a reasonable cost. Expect more details concerning the committee's consideration of the topic shown. A committee has reviewed the proposal that did not pass in March twenty twenty-four, has visited the three Swansea fire stations. And also has taken a tour of the recently built fire station in West Hamlet. The committee has determined that the town is best served by three fire stations. Keeping three stations will allow all properties in the town to be a reasonable distance from a fire station. The committee has also concluded that while earlier proposals did not receive approval for many reasons, the most important factor to address is the cost of any new station. The committee is made up of town board and committee members, current and past firefighters. And other concerned residents and business people of the town. The committee has been holding frequent meetings open to the public since July. We hope that you will take advantage of the open houses at station number two. Firefighters and members of the committee will be there to answer questions. We believe that after a visit, you will be in the best position to understand subsequent posts from the committee. And to make an informed decision on a new fire station in the March twenty twenty-five election. The next post will address the advantages of a new station number two.
That's, that's, that's the first one.
This question has been posed.
We don't have to hear it again.
Moving the trucks and station away from town hall to a new location has several advantages. The new station design offers improved space for working on and around the trucks. Better ventilation of exhaust and the room to accommodate larger trucks. Currently, the trucks in station number two barely fit through the doors. The latter truck will be moved to the new station number two. Presently, the latter truck fits in the west station with less than an inch to spare in the front, in the rear, and from the ceiling. The new station will meet the National Fire Protection Association standards for fire stations and firefire safety. Including decontamination facilities. The new station will have better battling facilities and more storage space. The new station number two will allow better public access, including code mandated handicap access. More efficient space for organized storage and more flexibility to meet changing needs. The new station will help the town meet insurance services organization standards. Which impact insurance rates for the town and in turn potentially impact taxes. And the new station should help the fire department recruit new members, a crucial need right now. The next post will summarize the committee's decisions concerning the best site for a station replacing station number two. Replacement for station number two should not only serve the same functions that the existing station does. But also provide room to expand as the needs of the town change. Because the new station must replace the coverage of the existing station. Ideally, it needs to be centrally located and able to easily respond to calls in the most densely populated north area of town. As well as the rest of the Route thirty-two corridor. After the new station is completed, no part of Swansea will be more than five miles from a fire station. The committee considered several possible sites on or close to Route thirty-two. Looking for properties that could accommodate a fire station and that were not expensive for the town to acquire. The airport was willing to lease land they owned on the east side of Route thirty-two to the town of Swansea. But the sites offered had building high restrictions that made them unsuitable. The availability and cost of purchasing some of the other sites made them less attractive. The decision was made to focus on the town-owned property at three twenty-one Old Homestead Highway. As previously explained, the committee has been focused on minimizing the cost of building a new station number two. There is some urgency, since delays will most likely result in increased building costs. Other sites would need to be purchased, which would add time as well as cost to the project. If a new station is built on this site, it can be ready for a build in twenty twenty-five. Availability of town water and sewer at the existing site results in a significant savings over the use of wells and septic system. Dependence on wells would incur an additional expense because cisterns would be needed to provide the necessary water storage for a sprinkler system, which is required by code. So, the committee concluded that the town-owned site at three twenty-one Old Homestead Highway was optimal. Because other sites would require more time and money for construction. The next post will address the ways in which our modified proposal results in lower costs than the proposal which failed to win approval last March. All its replacement for station number two meets present needs in an efficient and practical fashion while preserving opportunities for expansion as needed. The new design offers cost savings over the previous design. The sooner we can build this station, the more we will save on future construction costs. Because the building footprint is smaller than it was in last year's designs, there will be lower costs for site preparation. In addition, the total square footage of the new proposed building is less than the previous proposal, resulting in a further reduction in construction costs. In the new proposal, the garage base faces directly onto Route thirty-two, reducing paving requirements and associated costs. In the previous design, the rooms and spaces were bigger, especially in the administrative area. For example, please note that in last year's design, which is shown here, there was a large training area in addition to a conference room. But a generous amount of space is given to hallways, and there are large locker and turnout spaces. The new design shown here is more efficiently arranged to eliminate unnecessary space while preserving essential functional spaces. We will now zoom in to compare specific areas of the current previous designs. The size of the one multi-purpose area used for both training and meeting is less than the new design. The full kitchen has been replaced with a kitchenette. The full kitchen has been replaced with a kitchenette. In the new design, the spaces used by firefighters, such as the lockers, bathrooms, and turnout room, now more accurately reflect the size of the department while unneeded doors and hallways have been eliminated. The compressor room used to fill the self-contained breathing apparatus bottles has been moved to the mezzanine area. While the previous design also had a mezzanine area over the firefighter spaces, it did not have a second story over the administrative area. The proposed design has a second story, which will be mostly unfinished storage space, but available should future needs require expansion. It is much cheaper to build the shell of the second floor now than it would be in the future. The elevator, similar to the one in Wickham Hall, would allow items to be moved easily into and out of storage on the second floor. The emergency management office shown here would be added only if the town could secure additional funding. The location of a future bathroom is shown, but there are no plans to build a second floor bathroom at this time. As noted previously, the compressor room is now located on the mezzanine overlooking the garage bays. The mezzanine will be used by the fire department for drying out hoses and for conducting vertical training, among other uses. In the spirit of keeping costs as low as possible, the committee has decided that polished concrete floors are suitable and will reduce finishing expenses. Wood frame construction is cheaper to build and more flexible if future changes to the station are needed. If the town can secure a grant to put solar panels on the roof which faces south, the town will benefit from savings in electrical costs. Please note that the gabled roof design will be architecturally similar to the roof lines of the buildings nearby. The next post will explain the cost of the proposed replacement for station number two.
There you have.
Just one question, how far off is the road? Eighteen, is that enough? Do you be able to turn up the trucks around and back into?
We just got.
Did you turn those enough to bring that ladder?
You know what I'm saying?
Cause they can pull in like this and they can back.
Yeah, okay.
So there's a side.
How can it work?
All right. So the, um, now that I have this site plan, I can take a screenshot of a part of that and put it side by side instead of having the sketch control over the other one. And it's a fairly easy thing to do. I don't have to change the narration on that slide going like the two side by side and putting signage above it. And then re- re-pollary video. But that's the idea of course, but the committee would like to. You know, this guy doesn't love it. We were thinking of starting to show these videos in January and leading up to the delivery session during the March. Do we go earlier than that and start before that? And as far as the cost goes, um, like I said, um, Mike and Eric and Scott and I and Jeff Heard have been invited to join the architect and maybe Michael and the T W people and Jeff Ray. At a meeting at one o'clock on Monday, hoping that's a time we can all make to, um, look at this site plan and talk about it. And Scott's already pointed out that maybe we don't need as much landscaping as a single lot here. And, and, and try to make sure we're all on the same page there. And this is the kind of thing they want us to do. The architect would like to consult with us if we go forward here, but the rest of the committees, we're, we're not, we're not planning on meeting again unless we need it. This is the day I was going to end the committee's work. I was going to come and present this all to you and say, okay, take it from under me. And, and we're, we're certainly available to help, um, you know, spread the word around town to, to, uh, convince people to, to pay for this. Uh, but that's, um, that's where we are right now. So I'll be, questions about that.
First of all, I was very impressed with the whole thing. His model is incredible. When the park came in and I sat there and looked at you, so I mean, we had the answers you had, you did, your research and a lot of important things. I, I, I commend you guys doing a great job. The one issue I think that we need to sell this project is I hear from a lot of people is great, we've got a fire department. Do we have a man inside to run it? And that's where I'm concerned. I think we need to press and we need to figure out, it's like when we're building this fire department, but we need force that's gonna man it. Do you know what I mean? We need to sell both sides of this. You know, I hear a lot, you know, we gotta answer calls, we gotta, you know what I mean? What good is it to have the building where we don't have the people to go in it? I hear that a lot, Bill. And I think we have to, we're gonna try to sell this, we're gonna sell it bulk. You know, we're, I'm showing you our fire department, we've got our manpower, we get the new station. I think we're gonna do this. I think you changed your job as far as you can go. As far as the money goes, we don't know what the number is yet, right? We have no idea.
We're hoping it will be, so that we can last, we can go, we must be doing whatever for places. Luckily, inflation hasn't been that much a little last year. Building costs are not likely to have gone down. We're hoping that by eliminating some things and changing the cheaper construction and, and, uh, safe work where we can record realizing that you're saving. We only aren't there. What we want to see.
I don't know how you can get anybody, to be honest, with you guys downsized it. You did exactly what maybe couldn't go anymore. I, if this doesn't sell it, I don't know what good it'd be. To me, I'm too, too impressed, Bill. I mean, I really impressed, I.
I think they should keep the two issues separate. So we've discussed that in our committee's lack.
You did.
Um, you know, one thing at a time. You don't want to overwhelm people, you know, explaining one thing about a replacement for station two, which is what we're doing there. And yeah, the other issue is, is, um, getting people. I promise here, but you can certainly promote that. You're gonna be doing that because they've been doing that all along anyway. It's gonna get people into the fire department.
And we do mention in the video that will help, we hope it will help.
But there, well, I asked you that question, Mike. Do you feel, remember I asked you that, just, do you feel this could help us on improving people having this nice new station and having, and maybe that wealth increase, um, you know, the opportunity to.
Yeah, I don't think it'll hurt, but I think in the short term it helps. But we're, you know, now I'm not sure.
Just have been involved in issues of the. And I think the reality is, it's not the same to volunteer for a fire department anymore. That you want young men, young men have families, they, they have a lot of commitments and to be able to commit every week to doing training or something else. It, it's just really hard for, for those young men to do that. And I, I don't kind of get around that, to be honest. I think that's a big, big issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, hiring young women.
Yeah, we.
Young women also have the worries. And I mean, it's, the reality is, I don't know how it's, you know, vulnerable, you know, you just be able to join the fire department and, and get your training with other guys and going on calls and that sort of thing. Well, it, it's way more involved in that now. You have to get certified at firefight one or firefight two. You know, those are extra classes that you have to take beyond anything you do in the fire department. And then if if you work out of town, you can't help the town during the day. Um, it used to be, you know, Homestead Woolen Mills, they let everybody out to go to a fire for, even Manadok did at one time. I don't think you do anymore. But, you know, it's, I don't know what the solution is. I, I don't want to be wet blanket on the whole thing, but it's really, it is the problem. And it's, it's it's not these guys' fault that they can't recruit. It's, it's way more involved in that.
You know, we're looking against another bathroom that's gonna run this is because of the taxes this year too, right? We're gonna have an increase in taxes this year. And that's a big issue too, right? And it is a tough year to do that. You know, we're gonna, we're up against this. The tax increase. That people are.
Are we gonna have a tax increase or the rates going to be down?
Maybe Jimmy shouldn't be involved in your marketing.
We spend an awful lot of time in the committee talking about this issue. We did. And, um, as Scott said, we decided that our purpose is on the building and that's what we needed to do. But one of the reasons that we put that second floor, I heard is that the, the nature of the apartment here might have to change by the end. Or, or soon, where we might have to have people staying there one full time. We're not advertising that as far as we're building, but that's something that may have to happen. And we don't know, but we want to be flexible. We want that for an opportunity.
Well, it's gonna have to last fifty years, so a lot can change.
Yeah.
Yes, Bob?
I've got an al- alternative. Cause I, I'm from the state. I really agree with it. I I fully, I've looked over town hall and I've looked over the office side of town hall. And in my estimation, the, the town hall offices have grown a lot more than they quite enough. I would like to see a new town hall office building on three twenty one. About fifty by seventy, brand new building. I would like to see the fighter lab take over the existing town hall. Now the upstairs for offices, they're already there. And want a brand new ground to that. So it's detached. Don't get nasal films in it. It's centrally located. We have a problem within the fight that will burst out. Getting them. We also have an issue with the administration, which maybe caused a battle. I'm not gonna get into that here. I don't think that's my possession. That needs to be taken care of before we move forward here. Um, you got, you're gonna have, you got three stations. You're gonna have that. Right now, in my estimation, this town is dangerously low on fire rights. We're gonna be able to take care of it all. I doubt it, you know, in serious at all. So, so we need to do something. So. We need to. We need to, if, if we're gonna go to like, if we need to go to a full-time fighting level, it's best to have it at, at, at town hall or it is something, you know, whether it's currently it's, um, make that the, um, not too fine a switch. And we, if we have to make that full-time, there's, there's space to do that. You're gonna have to close the other two. So you have a full time there. People are not gonna like that. But I mean, we can't, we, we can't avoid three point five million, well, six or seven people. Really, you know.
Well, your alternative, what do you think that would cost us? Uh, we still have to build a town hall. We still have to put it around. So it's probably gotta be.
I'm gonna just, I'm, I'm sorry. We, we, you know, we, we've debated it. We're, we're here tonight because we appointed a committee, we gave them a mandate. They've reviewed that. They, they, you had the opportunity in the meetings to discuss your, your option. Uh, the committee chose something different. And, and that's what we're dealing with tonight. And the expectation is and the hope is that this facility will attract new firefighters. But whether it does or doesn't, we need this station. And, and personally, I prefer that we focus our discussion tonight on what you all have proposed, which is you, you've done exactly what we asked you to do. Except you've, you've exceeded it by leaps and bounds. I, I don't, I, I personally, when, when we thought when we started this, that we were gonna get a proposal, I had no clue that we were gonna get what you all put together. This, this is literally phenomenal in, in the time that I've, I've served as a selectman. So for tonight, we're, we're gonna, I wanna focus on this and I hope the chair will support me on that. Because I think you, you deserve to, to get the answer from us. And, and from my perspective, it's just incredible what, what all of you all have done. That it's just an amazing uh, product that you brought forth. And, and all I would ask you to do is that when you prove, when you bring us the, the cost, that you continue to move forward and, and educate people on it. If, if all twenty of you just influence five people, this, this would, this would take care of it in the future. And regardless of the tax rate, regardless of the tax burden, this, this town has always supported proj- projects that were well explained and understood. There's no question that we need another station. And what you've done is give us one that's saleable. So I, I just hope we can focus on that and, and give you the remaining charge.
Well, well, I just wanna say, Bill, there's the ISO, um, insurance things and we can't close a station. We have to keep the three stations because what will happen is our home insurance will go up in certain areas if we're not a certain distance to a fire station. So you're gonna have a lot of people upset with that, I'm just saying.
I think the chief can tell you a little bit more about that. That's.
You should bring him on. If you explain this to you, you know, committee.
So I think it's, I don't know the question anyway, that we can do that because I'm not gonna be happy if we don't have a fire station within my range and, you know, my taxes keep going up and now I'm paying, you know, double the insurance and it it's just not gonna work for me. And I'm sure there's a lot of people out there.
Even if we, even if we're under the purview of ISO, people's insurance rates, they're going up.
Oh.
There's questions as to whether firms are gonna continue. Look what's happening with Medicare. How many firms have pulled out of the state? So I, that's a great point. And, and, and thank you, Eric, for supporting her on that because we, you're a hundred percent correct.
And I have to agree with you, Bill. We have to stay on this subject now. With this far into it, we asked them, they brought back a great product. I agree. I said right from the beginning. And I think we cannot waste no more time on other aspects and talking about them. You know, everybody had their opportunity to be on that committee. And I think it would be an insult to them as a committee to start listening to other options right now. When we got one put in front of us, which we asked, so I am gonna hundred percent agree with you on, on this product that we got in front of us.
So, um, are there aspects of those videos? I mean, other than the, I, I ended up putting the two site plans side by side to compare them, uh, since we have one today. But other than that, are there other things you'd like to see changed or were, were clear enough on?
Two, two things for me. One, uh, was emphasizing the, the distinction of the square footage. Uh, the, the, the plan that's shown shows it as being sixty four hundred square feet, but doesn't indicate what the previous rendition was uh, graphically. So if you, if you drop down, I don't know, was it eight thousand square feet?
I'm sorry. The footprint sixty four hundred. The other one was eleven eighty.
So I think graphically, that really supports what you put in. The other was with regard to the E M T station, that the comment was made that it would be, I'm paraphrasing, it would be installed in, uh, if additional funding could be secured. That's a red flag. If addition, because it'll be grant funded. And later on in the video, there was mentioned that it would be grant funded.
Just say maybe a future emergency management area or.
Think we, we, um, we tried to stay, I tried to take the grant funding out of the emergency management station because we pointed out that we could get that without grant funding. Whereas the solar panels were grant funded, that, that would have to be grant funded. I took the grant funding out of the video, I thought.
No, no, you did for, for the E M T.
Right.
But, but when people hear additional funding, then the, the, the red flag is it's gonna be.
They think it'll come out of their pockets.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Um, so how do you suggest I work that?
Say future growth, you know, I mean, the future, uh, needs, you know, just basically available for future emergency management.
Or emergency management office.
Root for that in the future.
And the only thing I have to add is, I got Scott's idea of what I said. I, I hear his side of it. But then at least. But then at least, it should make him confused, and I can see that, let's stay on one thing, let's sell one one part of this, I agree. But we should have answers for people that are gonna ask questions. Well, what are you gonna do about putting people in there? We should have something, we should be loaded to have those answers, not maybe promoted, okay, and say, you know, but.
The answer's recruitment, right? I mean, that is the only answer to that. That question is recruitment, and fire department, they got their ban line down Swansea here, West Swansea here, I don't know where else out, and you're looking, they've been looking for. They have a yard sign out by the community society. That's partly recruitment, people are starting to see that, maybe that will, that addressing that problem.
And just bringing up, a fire station should provide a little bit more uh focus on the fire department. People, people start talking about fire station, they're gonna start thinking about the fire also, hopefully that will lead to some people, maybe deciding they wanna be part of it.
But your intention could be that you're working on recruitment, the department is working on it, and.
That sounds good.
You know, that you're working.
Yeah, and all I was saying is, this is what I hear a lot of, you know, we're building a fire station, we don't have the guys to go in it, you know, and that. And I'm trying to just see how they can push that on. So you do agree that it is a a little of the issue, right?
It's a lot of the issue, but it's not hard to, not this issue.
I got it.
You're the issue as a select board, you're working on recruitment at the same time, you're working on building a new station, so they're two two efforts.
I got it.
So they aren't part of the same bond. I I think I think the uh, you know, committee, I I'm looking for reasons to gather the twenty of us, again, nineteen of us now, uh together again. Uh, as I said, we've got the smaller design subcommittee that is gonna be more closely with the architect that actually came up with this design and so on. And then we have the idea of 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 coming up with some other things. I mean, we we, none of us are graphic designers, but we talked about maybe a mailing like we had last time, last year. Uh, where we had the broken guy in the private, Swansea uncovered is one piece, it's gonna come out with a lot of this information that's you saw in the videos, and Swansea uncovered piece. It might print all of it, I gave them, uh, but but that's, that's gonna come out beginning of December. Then then we have, starting in January, we have these videos going out. Um, I, my intent is to publish some through the town website, webpage, or um Facebook page. And the, post on the community page of the town uh Facebook page, uh links to the videos. Hopefully that'll work, each label will say things like, um, uh, this is serious, the the second part, it'll give the topic of the of the video, and it'll say, um, it'll it'll talk about these open houses, if they're still the calendar, when when people go to the fire station and talk to somebody about what our work. It can also uh say if a lot of uh, if for additional information, contact Dave Ward or my email. Uh, but basically, that's the plan right now, that's our marketing plan, is to have these sequential postings. And obviously, they'll all be available, we're gonna post the first one first, a few days later, the second one, and a week later, maybe the third one, etc. Just trying to have people watching and seeing what you'd like them to have watching sequence, because as you saw tonight, they they sort of build and flow one into the other. Is there other stuff we can do? Well, you know, direct mailing seems a little bit expensive, um, maybe. You know, do we do we send out a a piece in the mail to every registered voter who voted in the last election? I mean, what do we do? I mean, this is, this is one, these are questions that that we as a committee aren't gonna be able to do, focus on.
We addressed them.
We addressed them.
We talked about, we addressed a lot of different stuff, and this is what we decided on, these videos here, and Jay and his wife narrated them, which is great job there. Uh, this is what we decided that we're reaching those people and gives them.
Well, there's also buy, so that's a buy-in. If they click down the link, they they wanna do it, but everything else that we're doing is, hopefully, they read.
But I think what Jay is asking is, do you have anything else with the committee to do? Is this enough, in your opinion, other than?
Presumed we get the price we're looking for.
Well, we're still gonna work with the architect, we saw this, we're gonna be involved with that, and maybe more than justify this, we started working with their there. But it's, it's uh, that that is gonna come to a point where we have to have the cost. And then I will make another PowerPoint about cost, something they would somehow, members of the committee. We're we're gonna have to uh, at at some point, this is, it it's gonna be coming up with ways in which we can reach out to the community, and we can each go and talk to our friends, but. We could put posters up, uh, advertising these videos um in the uh in various places around town.
Remember Wally Smith? Way back in the beginning, sitting right in the front row, marketing, it's all about marketing, and.
I mean, he was right.
He was, he's.
He was, yeah.
And, you know, we're, we we don't want to have done all this work that we did in the summer, and then just go away and not keep presence, but. When I call nineteen people to give up an hour or two a night on on something, I want to have something substantial to work on. And we're just not, just don't have that much right now to do as a as a big committee. And most of the time, we're, we're, I mean, the last meeting, I showed them the videos, we got some edits, and uh, and that's about all we were able to come up with, so. I don't know how you guys feel. That's that's where we are, and and we we have to sell the need, and we need to sell the the fact that this is a cheaper alternative that will last for a long time and and benefit town, that's what we're after.
What about if we put, um, we sent just an overview of the plans to a printer and put a poster bar up in the lobby of the town clerk tax collector area with a Q R code that brings them to all the videos, so you're seeing. Yeah, but there's, I don't think there's any sound, just like, not so. So, but if they have the Q R, then people stand in line for a long time, sometimes they're everyone coming in at the same time, they're on their phones anyway. So we just have a basic plan with some sort of phrase to catch attention, like, um, have you heard?
That's a nice idea.
Then they're just, because most people are sitting on their phones while they wait for the town clerk or tax collector.
Yeah, and some people would look at it after they talk to the town clerk or tax collector, you know, it was catchy there. Um, so I think what I need to do is look at my idea and make his ownership of these videos. I have to do a little bit of editing, like few, though, um, I think I get my narrator to re-narrate one slide or two. But um, but that's, as soon as I get that done, we're good. I I'm gonna be away starting the twenty fifth of November till this, through the sixth of December, I won't get down, so. Um, hopefully, we can take care of some of that.
I was gonna send you, yeah, the only other thing I had, and I don't want you to have to record it and then re-record it, but I heard no part of Swansea will be more than five miles from a station. You've got some pretty far-flung places.
I measured it.
Even like Taylor Hill and some of those.
I measured it on that town map.
Okay.
You know, I mean, assuming that the uh, the map I was getting was was to scale.
So not necessarily, like, it could be miles, that's the crow fly, not necessarily miles.
Oh, no, yeah, it's miles is the crow fly.
Yeah.
Now, obviously, getting it from one place to another is is difficult, and that. I'll get to that in a second, but there there's one slide on there where I do circles around fire stations, and those are four mile circles. I couldn't get a five mile circle, for some reason I couldn't manufacture, so it's a four mile radius there, and there's, when you move the station up Route thirty-two, it takes it out of the four mile range of those places here, but it is crow flies. And you're you're right, there are some places in town you have to go around to get places. And one of the things we we didn't notice when we were looking at, solve this, we're looking, I'm sure you've heard this before, but there is the road off thirty-two that goes up to Marcy Hill that is a class six road, and if that were somehow a road that fire trucks could reliably go along, and that would open up that whole area to fire trucks and make the town much safer, that area would be safer. That that's a road improvement project in staff, that was part of my, part of the things I was gonna recommend to you. Thank you for reminding.
There's a few of those.
But that that, there's a, so a lot of houses on Marcy Hill, and this, there's a road connection right there. And if that road is improved, it also improves area for residences to be developed and and so on along that road. It makes makes the value of that property well, quite a bit, if that becomes a road, a road that can be.
Expect some of the people along it will not see it that way.
Some people might not see it that way. But what it what it would do is 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 allow fire trucks from a station, unfortunately, get there. Right now, getting to Marcy Hill's river station, now, but it's the east station, have to get there first. Yes, we'll run around, we'll try to get there. From station two.
Facebook couldn't be targeted to your ads.
We're 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 talking about the Facebook, the Swansea community page on Facebook, as well as the town Facebook page as being where we're gonna see videos, so we can also have members of our committee do personal hosts.
Yeah, sure. They they will actually uh push them out. The people that are in this, you know, looking at Facebook, so.
Oh, I see, you you use marketing on Facebook, yeah.
So we wait for the class, and then we move to the next step is promoting it, is that how we do it?
Well, yeah, I'm gonna work on what we got right now with Michael to get that, and then we'll see, but.
A lot just to take to get the process, you know.
They said they could do it in, what, two weeks, is that what you said?
Pretty soon.
So he says it's been two weeks.
You know, the shorter the time, the larger the cost. That doesn't.
Yeah.
Take consideration.
And so there are all the questions.
When the open houses?
Well, we we schedule them for January, uh, eleventh, eighteenth and twenty-fifth, Saturdays. Uh, because we thought we were gonna post this shortly after the New Year. Um, I think the New Year is on a Wednesday, so it might post it the following week, your first post, and and then sort of after that. And of course, it might not be me doing the posting, it might be Michael who's a poster, because he's gonna have control of these videos at that point. I mean, I really, I I think that it's time for us as a committee to hand over what we got to our administration to take care of. And I'm I'm more than happy to work on edits and things like that, but um, it's really, you know, it's time for you folks to look the way you wanna do it.
But we still want the twenty people in the committee to be involved.
Absolutely, we'll all be involved personally, and and also, I think that's a great idea about, you know, we all can post on Facebook and and say, I've been working on this committee, you know, we can all have a coordinated plan to do that as well.
Shifts at the recycling center with a little piece of paper, U R code, like she's saying.
I think we'll see, see what you might, it's not a bad place.
Yeah.
We're suffering some.
Okay.
Also, two two full stops, yeah, we're thinking maybe, you know. Duncan Bellitt.
Oh, yeah, I mean, Duncan drove us north.
Of town hall north.
Oh, yeah.
Every problem is solved there.
Was there any discussion of having a whole uh gathering here to?
Well, yeah, there's a possibility we gotta gather here, this is one of those things that's been thrown. We didn't wanna assume that happened without your, you know, comfortable with that. Again, if we have, once we get the cost, then we can talk about that, but then with basically a question and answer session, we could show the plans on the screen or something other than. You know.
And a deliberative session, sorry, Mike.
So then, we as a committee actually started meeting at Station Two. It's awful, you can't appreciate what Station Two is, it takes sitting there for a few hours. Then when you come here, we're to next refurbished building, and you're like, now we need a new station, and we'll go forward with it. You you just can't appreciate, you know, when you say, well, we got this, we got this problem, but they haven't had a question about it, once we started meeting, we'd be just looking at the room and look at it. So although it might be good to have a group here for those stuff, it would be better if all the trucks out and doing the bays there. And let people see the station, and let them smell the station, let them experience the station.
That's, that's a good idea, we we, that's why we have those open houses scheduled for January there, rather than have a meeting here. Um, but we we could, we could still have a meeting here or there, and invite people to come to the fire station um for an update and view of the plans, etc., etc.
Will there be a group of you to present the deliberative?
I'm expecting to be there, I'm expecting to be there, and expecting as many of the committee as possible to be over in session.
We had a good turnout last year, I think we'll have a really good turnout, we should go before or after the Grinch Hall.
We have a plan.
Okay.
Well, we have a great caterer for anything you wanna do here.
Yes, that's true, we do. You know, it's having caterers station two also.
The chairs have a little more cushion in station two. So, um, I will, I will try to work with Michael about getting these videos, I need to fix those couple things that might take me a day or so.
Sounds good.
Again, thank you for the work you guys put into this, and this was incredible. Check out what you presented, I mean, to, like Bill said, you did exactly what we asked for.
And guys, we also, planning, we're gonna get the cost back, and try to do something, planning board too, with that's all I'm really, so I'm gonna, you know, give a presentation there, and let everybody know what we're gonna have there, because, of course, any new project like that should go forward to the planning board.
I didn't know that Tom can ignore us, but still.
Once we have the cost, we have to take the C I P C two.
Steve is waiting with bated breath.
Yeah, I'm, he dropped off the committee early on, because he was too too stressed, so. I'm sure his.
He was on that?
He was on there.
He was?
Yeah, there was a lot.
So Jerry or the caterer, I just.
Do you wanna do town hall, throw the demonstration, or do you want?
Be, we just hunt that a week, I mean, there's nothing urgent. Yeah.
That may be.
That might be the hardest part. Yeah, just give me a call when they're gonna come by.
He's working.
Since we have a few people here. Because I'd be interested to find out.
Yeah, I know, Eric was saying that we we have to get this one through, and someone that, sure, I got.
Nice to listen, right?
And it sounded like.
It sounded like it's up here all like mine.
Sign them up.
That's what I said.
Sign them up.
I said, you gotta work first, and then they come up.
Yeah.
Especially our fire station projects, when does that, when do you start getting the station?
When does that when do you start getting the station? Well. Oh, okay, yeah. So he said. Sounds like you're on the. Family. You know, then here. Oh, I see what you're saying. So the idea is, I mean, when you say this is here, no, it's because of your. You don't even go in. You know, the idea is, you know. So who's watching? Body wash. No. Just waiting. I think he's coming back.
Great suggestion. We're glad you came. We're glad you came. That was that true. Very sick. You have a new town hall entry.
Well, we kind of ran into some challenges, so I kind of put it on hold. Sort of Angel started talking about. You missed.
We'll go on. What? New business.
We uh, see you guys. Thank you again. Drive careful.
Hour discussion. When do we want town halls?
So I I I understand where you're where you're talking from. What I what I want to know was who? How are we handling people that can't be there during normal eight to five hours? And and the whole purpose for us staggering it the way we did. And there may only be three or four people or whatever that come in between five and six, but that was the purpose. And and starting later on Monday was to give people a chance to leave early on Friday. And come in late Monday, which hopefully gave a few extra hours. So so reading what other towns are doing was helpful because they're dealing with the same thing. They've got people that aren't available from eight to four, nine to five. Whatever happens. Uh, but I to me, there's not a compelling reasonable change.
I disagree strongly.
Okay, so that's.
I don't think people are not getting served. I don't hear that from people that I can't get in at any time. Um, I don't know which it depends office by office, how people are accommodated, but the town clerk hours could set their own hours anyway. They're really just following our our lead, but I I feel I really feel strongly that. A employees don't like it, which matters to me because I'm trying to keep them happy. But I also don't think it is good for the customers because like I said in the memo. I think we have far more people that are waiting to get in Monday morning when we're closed, when they're expecting us to be open. Than we are people coming in from five to six.
I was surprised to hear that. And yeah, each evening, right? There's very little traffic.
I mean, it depends month to month, but in general, it's really only those offices, really only town clerk's office. Uh, and everyone else is working on other things. I'm not saying people are like sitting are sitting there twiddling their thumbs, but um. There's not like tons of people coming in to see the building inspector at five thirty because and that's quite that was the thought is, oh, great. You know, in the evening, people play, people come in, meet with the planning department. It really, it really doesn't happen that way.
Now you just interrupt because I'm I'm out of the the loop here.
Get you back up speed.
I did. Yeah, just get me to speed because I maybe know this is an issue. What 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 brought this up? Why do we what 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 started?
It's something I hear routinely, just kind of in the, I'll say, the grumbling level. But um, when Sebastian was here, he met with the town hall employees and discussed, you know, what they like about working here, what they don't. And the overwhelming thing was a lot of people did not like the current hours.
Eight twenty three.
So when he met with the board, I I am taking the opportunity that you said you were open to it. I've made no promises. I showed you what the memo we sent to them was. Um, didn't say we were changing the hours, but I took that little opening um. To get their input, see what they thought. Maybe maybe it was not that important, or maybe they all, maybe their views were so different that there wasn't any real clear consensus. Um, but I did, I didn't want to get their input. Um, so their their preference for people that are watching this that don't know what we're talking about. Was going from uh, on Monday to Thursday, eight to five, and then Friday, eight to noon. Um, I think the half, the half day will be a big selling point to people, for people to stay here and for people to come here. Because if you have that half day, you're probably not going to want to go somewhere where you're going to go back to a normal nine to five. Um, you know, we have people that do night meetings. If they're doing night meetings, maybe they're only going to have a couple hours on that Friday and they can. You know, get get their work done quickly. Um, and then take advantage of that. So I I think that's that's the option that I preferred going into it, which I didn't tell anyone. Um, but it's also what what got the most votes. And I think to your point, Bill, one thing I heard um, is kind of an idea is to put. Again, it's a Q R code thing, so it would have to require someone to have a smartphone or they could, we could just give them a number. If you're here when we're not open, call us and we'll find a way to serve people because we do this. Whether they want to come in on on often hours or, you know, Heather Heather wants to work more hours and I just. In terms of like having weekends and it's up to her if she wants to do that. But I think the experience has shown that it's not hugely utilized. If she starts to set that expectation, well, now you have to. You know, now you have to staff that Saturday and if you're sick that Saturday or something or unavailable. Yeah, yeah, you just want to think about before you take on that new commitment. I I don't think people aren't getting served and I think we'll make sure people do get served.
So we'd be going to, is it a one hour? Is it an eight hour day, eight to five, or is it eight and a half hours?
Well, in terms of open hours, eight to five is nine hours.
No, I know that, but in terms of staffing, there's there's a lunch break, which. So I'm just asking, how many hours does a an hourly work?
It would be still a forty hour week. So if people take a lunch and they, you know, go to. Market basket and pick up a sandwich, they go to lunch, they would have a half hour unpaid, but they would have to, you know, figure out somewhere in the schedule, maybe on Friday. How to make that up, but it's most of our people, much as I try to encourage them to take. Dedicated breaks, go walk around the track or they they want to work. They like their jobs. They they want to get their work done and then go home. So I think practically most of them are, you know, they're eating something for lunch, but they're not taking lengthy breaks where they're going to keen for an hour. So I think I think we let them continue to work forty hours, manage their time, get their work done. And. The open forty.
This is a reduction of hours.
It's a reduction of.
What are the hours that you were suggesting? Eight in the morning open to five? Monday through Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay, Monday through Thursday and then Friday is what?
Eight to noon.
Eight to noon.
Why not? Why not take the approach that Winchester has?
What's their approach?
Seven, five. Monday, Monday through Thursday and be closed for like.
Well, one of the, one of the things that people don't like about the current hours is seven thirty already is too early. If people have a half hour, an hour commute, just getting up at, you've got pets or kids to get off to school, you're getting up at five o'clock. I know. So I think we're kind of compromising by going to the eight start. Right now we're at eight thirty. But uh, that was not, I think that was the. Other than the ones that got none, that was the least least supported by the employees.
Can I ask you what the hours were?
Monday.
What are they now?
Monday, nine thirty to six, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight thirty to five, Friday, seven. Well, I'm I'm making a point that if someone asks me, what are your hours like? Do you have, do you have a few minutes?
Oh, really?
Open Monday, open early for.
Nine thirty to six on Monday.
Nine thirty to six on Monday, Tuesday and.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday is eight thirty to five.
Eight thirty to five, yeah, and then Friday.
Is seven thirty to four.
Uh, they are a little confusing now. I agree.
And it was done with the best of intentions. We'll still open a little bit later and then be openly and then Friday we'll start a little earlier and we'll be done a little earlier. And I mean, they like, everyone likes getting done at four on Friday, but um.
And Billy, your argument was that you.
I have no real argument.
None of that given. I shouldn't worry that that was, but your feelings were that we molded these hours to suit the people that. Get out of work and they got time to get there, right? That what you're saying?
That was the complaint that we had.
Okay.
Was that complaint directed towards the town office as a whole or the town clerk?
No, that was another thought I was going to bring up because other towns have departments opening at different times, like uh. Code enforcement could could be open at seven thirty because most of the people are going to work.
It's just sat in appointment. Absolutely.
Yeah, and then the the town clerk, I haven't been to Chesterfields Town all a long time, but the tax collector was open. Like one day a week and the town clerk was open s- specific hours. So they had they they had internally that kind of flexibility. What we've chosen to do is be uniform.
And I think I felt strongly towards that at the time that, you know, everyone should be there at the same times, but it doesn't recognize the differences in the. In the departments. Again, some people have night meetings, some people don't. Some people can practically work from home, others can't. Some people have to be there when people are getting home from work, others don't. So I think recognizing that some of the departments have different customer needs and different business needs. Something I've seen the other side of. So I I was definitely adamant. Now you want to, yeah, everyone the same hours. And I think ideally that's still, you know, for the most part the case, but Ringe, look at their website. I little, I'm still not sure if those are actually their town hours. Because every office has a different hour. I don't think you want that either, but um. I think some consistency is good, but even if, you know, we go to this hour and the clerks say we'd really like to be open five to seven on Monday.
They set their own hours.
Right.
I just want to add because I did take time to talk to everyone about it and it is something to keep in mind. We want to serve the community, but also we're in. A society right now where finding reliable, dependable health is extremely difficult. And so it is a balance between serving the community and also recognizing appreciation for our employees. So although it shifts the schedules a little bit. Having a half day on Friday, the Friday it stays open. Some people who in the community need to, maybe they take a Friday off and they're doing their chores anyway. Our errands, but it also allows us as employees to make up any time that we might have taken off. For appointments during the week and it still allows, you know, let's say we're there until twelve. But Mrs. Thompson can't come in until two. Okay, then I can rearrange my schedules. And make sure that maybe I leave early on Wednesday and I can stay longer on Friday for her. But overall, I think that it's a good way to show that. We hear what the employees are saying and we value what they say. And I also received feedback that certain people have been there for quite some time. And this current schedule was not what they agreed to when they were hired. So had this been the current schedule, they wouldn't have applied for the role, which is a scary thing. Because we again, don't want to lose them. So that's something to consider. It's hard to. To separate the town clerk's office from the rest of the office because we're in one building, but it is they set. She gets that whatever schedule she wants.
Did we start off at thirty seven and a half hours or something? When did we go to forty or?
Yeah, so when I started, we were thirty seven hours, thirty seven and a half hours. I think it was nine to five. And nine till like noon on Wednesday. And it was the app, it was, the idea was that the Wednesday afternoon was, I think it was Wednesday, was going to be like. Time the office was closed, but people were working and there were some concerns about how that was being implemented. So I think that's why we went away from that. That's another thing I'll say. I was adamant about that. Now I've kind of seen the light on. I was adamant enough. Forty hours should be full time. And, you know, so I think I supported and pushed to go to forty hours and I. You know, I understand why I did it in terms of the benefits and um, not peace, but maybe that was something the town had right before, you know, we changed. Not saying I'm suggesting that now.
Maybe the town was right.
Maybe Swansea was right.
I think that it's a good hack to um. Meet the needs of both groups of people.
This ain't some forty hours, but the new hours.
Still is forty, right, but now we're open forty two and a half, which is if some if if, you know, picked your office, the the. Town clerk's office, which just because they have to cover a window, but if one of them is out to cover the whole week, it's more than forty hours. So you're automatically building an overtime unless they're closing for lunch, which again, they try not to do because it's inconvenient to close and have people show up and not know they were closed for lunch. So it does, I mean, that's not a huge problem, but it does make it kind of difficult when we are a little shorter staffed in some of those, you know, window offices.
Do you think the? Eight thirty to five? Would be better than eight to five and then do six hours on Friday or. Four hours on Friday.
I don't, I'll be, I don't know. Yeah, we didn't, we tried to come up with some broad examples based on, so I I get what you're saying. I think.
Put it out here and something else. So if you're looking up the same.
Yeah, so some, that was what someone else said. Yeah, so someone else had picked that as something else.
The son of a, probably would. That should be eight thirty also, maybe eight thirty to. Two thirty. Six sounds. To make up for the eight thirty to five.
Yeah. That keeps the starting time more consistent. I think at least I liked the seven to five and the eight to noon because it gave you, it gave an easier opportunity to. Either have that like full half day for appointments and that sort of stuff. Or you only need to use four hours to then get to forty for the weekend, for a three day weekend.
Eight to five.
Yes, right. Yeah, no, no, yeah.
And also, again, so we don't always speak on behalf of the employees. It is sort of like free extra vacation time. Right? So instead of people taking that, it's sort of like indirectly you're giving. Allotted hours to them for them to have a long weekend with their kids or their families. And if those teach your workshops or things of that nature, time in the summer with their families. It allows, it's creating a better work life balance, which again is going to keep um, people happy. We have people with with kids, young kids, but then we also have employees in the office who are caring for their parents that are elderly. So it's the same amount. Commitment of taking care of someone else.
I'm not going to die on the hill between those two options, but I feel strongly that I think we should try something different. Please.
I think with regard to Heather, there there should be some flexibility there. Uh, having watched people scramble at the end of the month. Registrations or whatever, uh, God forbid the end of the month is a Friday and somebody comes at one o'clock. And then what the hell do you mean? You're only open a half a day. And so I I do think there where where she is should be considered. Also, Teresa. I'd be interested in knowing what what her thoughts are. Uh, because she's already under the gun with regard to challenges, getting invoicing and and all of that. So I would hope that she could have some flexibility if if she needed it. The other departments, I don't. So I would hope that she could have some flexibility if if she needed it. Uh the other departments, I don't. There's always gonna be a deadline. Somebody's gonna, somebody's gonna wanna send in a zoning application and they're gonna come in at three o'clock on a Friday. And oh my God, what the hell do you mean, you're closed now, I can't submit it. What am I gonna, so those things are always gonna happen, but.
It could happen now if they come at four on Friday.
Exactly, exactly, so I don't think that's a reason, but I do think for people's registrations, we we need to be careful. And get her input and then again, I've already said what I had to say about Teresa, so if tho- those will be my only two.
I should have talked to Teresa about it, of course, and she said that she liked the idea of the town. Being closed because she would be there anyway, and then that way no one is interrupting her workflow.
You're saying so like the Friday afternoon when there isn't traffic flow, like that?
It is easier for her.
We also need to monitor her. Burnout is.
Yeah.
Not in our best, our best.
Yes.
So I mean, pretty much these hours would be Katrina. And Kevin. I mean, everybody else really could be a little more flexible.
Well, we like to track, we like to try to have someone in the planning, the planning team, but yes. Not yet, that's what I was afraid of, but we're not there yet.
Oh, so many people watching.
How we did last time. If we do it by, based on her calendar year, uh I think we can wait until turn of the year.
Well, my opinion about is, I I really don't think I'm capable of making that decision, I think it's, I personally, I think it's just like. As administrator, he knows what he sees every day, he runs the team. Um he knows that the customer wants more than me sitting here and I'm gonna put my faith in what I think Michael feels, it's good for the town and. I think we hired him for that reason and I think that's, I think he's the leader of that group. And I think we should let him lead and if he feels that these are the hours that he wants his team and he's gonna make them all happy. I think it's, I think it's him, not me to to make that decision, I think he should have that decision.
I didn't say it would make them all happy necessarily, but.
Didn't mean by that, but I think what Megan said is it's true. I mean, you you make people give them what they need and and make them happier with their hours, I make my team happy at my restaurant, they twenty eight people. I make sure, you know, I try to give them a happy group, but I think it's you make a better decision than I ever could sit near mine. Cause you're there every day, you know what the customers, you see them come in and go, you know which team it's happy with. So all I'm saying is, I don't feel like I have a a good answer to, I'm gonna go along with what he feels is right, that's how I'm going. That's all I'm saying is I, I can't, I think your decision is gonna be better than mine.
And my decision is what my team recommended also, so.
There you go.
So then I'll consult with the clerk on what her thoughts are and then we can talk about implementation and such next week.
Sounds good.
On our list of uh action items for next week. I appreciate that, it means.
Next week will be in our place.
Okay, yeah, yeah, tell tell Sherry next week will be. Uh long term disability.
Sixty seven hundred bucks, that was just sixty seven hundred bucks total per person. Total, I don't think there's any reason to debate it.
Well, there's just one caveat that I want you to be aware of, but we'll talk about that later, but yeah, I think if it's something we wanna offer, fine, we can prove it. I was surprised it was that cheap too.
Long term disability.
Oh.
Adding that as a benefit.
Oh, adding that, just Philly, but yeah, and it's possible, so we can offer it.
She she's an amazing negotiator.
Sixty seven hundred bucks.
That's all.
That's a little cross that, well, that's what.
I did, I emailed it in writing, I said.
Teamwork.
But they do make sure you're disabled, they send a team over and.
Put you first in.
When do we end up with the hours and we move it to eight to five? That's where it is.
After that speech, no one was gonna argue with you.
Nobody said where it lies.
He just got the sign in front of the door and he's gotta tear it down and put something.
We've been doing it for a couple of weeks to just tell anything.
So you wanna.
No, consensus is fine.
Well, I've got this.
Yeah.
Something else.
Just in a non-public.
No, no, I mean, you said you wanted to.
No, that's fine, Bill, Bill already made the motion, so.
Okay.
You're gonna make that motion on disability.
Oh, we gotta make a motion on doing long, offering long term disability, right? I'll make that motion side.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Third quarter financial analysis, nobody but Bill looks at it.
It's color coded now.
Update on town hall entry.
I think we decided we're gonna punt on that, right? I mean, basically, we just ran into a couple of. Yeah, it's like a lot of things, every, like everything this year, there's a little more to it than we kind of expected, so we're gonna wait until Joe gets back and let the adult take it. He and I'm trying, we're trying to be helpful and getting asked questions, we didn't know the answers to and just got blank looks.
There's so many issues, like.
Well, when I heard, well, we're gonna have to close the town clerk's office for a week or so, I'm like, yeah, we gotta talk about this before we do.
Michael, I said, Mike, why don't we just bring it up for Bill inside in the office and then we were talking tonight and he says. You know what, let's just not even figure it out, let Joe handle it, it becomes big.
Let's see, it's.
So what the shit is she rock?
Short version is it's, oh, there's a lot of plaster.
So you're talking about inside?
Inside.
What they are, it's just she rock, okay, in the olden days, they used a lot. Plaster now, you must have known what you've been through, so it's dust everywhere, people are coming in there, it's hot. So they either gotta strip it when they're closed, clean it all up, then they can work with a meter ear reader, right? And um that's the situation, so I said to Michael, well, could we do like one day a week and close one day a week? Until they can get the plaster up, they mentioned they would work Saturdays and work on the plaster, through one wall. Clean it all up and then during the week they can put the boards in, but new sheet rock.
What's the ceiling? So they could do that, they they could do that today.
Yeah, they could take it at night, you know, Billy, and they're gonna cut right along the edge of the ceiling to maintain that ceiling, this is kind of brittle. You know, and I said at the edges fall down, why couldn't we put a nice trim, you know how they have this trim right here, molding, right? To hold up the ceiling better, cause it's yellow, it's actually smooth. But on that being happened, I realized at that point when I was talking that. I don't belong here and say nothing, because this is Joe's baby and I don't want Joe saying, what's supposed to get in wrong fire, what's he saying? Cause I turned around stupidly and I said, we gotta kick these stupid counters, these old white counters and that turned into a. And I run back to Michael's office, I gotta shut my mouth, Joe's gonna kill me. Right, yeah, I'm out of here, right?
Well, what's the other piece is that just as we keep going a little bit further and a little bit further, it's like, well, then you look at the counters, well, the counter goes to the other side.
Remember the counter is that shitty, Joe?
Or you then get the phone call. That says.
You've been doing this.
Yeah, that that I've, I just talked to the architect and I just talked to code enforcement. And your best bet is to tear it all down.
That's after you get done.
If he spoil my powder, they just like that, he goes, then you got the other side, I'm like, stop it, Mike.
The wall as we come down.
So Billy's, you want to know about this?
Is the ceiling box, seriously? Is the, is the ceiling plaster?
Yes.
Oh, we just take it all down, do it today. Do it today. Get it done.
Dangerous.
Just, yeah, I, it's not, it's not that big a job. I've done it.
What are you doing on Saturday? I am so out of this shit, you go.
As long as it's not.
I'll give you Rachel's number.
Is it razor wire or is it lath?
A lath.
Oh, that's a breeze. It truly is, Jerry. It's honestly, you and I could do that in a day.
Okay, don't get us into me and you doing it, cause I'm not doing it with you.
You told me you're a great she rock guy.
I'll be walking out like football, wipe my eyes, freaking Billy, Joe going, I told Jeff.
Um, the only thing I, I do have one. Um I just had one to briefly, Eric, I was just gonna talk about the tax rate rule, but I don't know if any of us have the patience or energy to do it, but. Just a warning, just just be careful doing what we did, you know, applying a lot to the fund balance last year, just. Don't, you can easily get, I won't say addicted, but you can get into a point where you rely on using that large amount. And then eventually it's, there's gonna come a time that you can't and um. Don't, don't blame me if that happens.
With these other projects coming online.
I know, then that's why, as long as we know, we all know that that was a one year.
Yeah, well, not necessarily, one year that amount, but, but, but not on a continuing basis, right?
And I gave you my little.
I brought it up, I didn't.
This is better than all.
And so is that.
Right.
Someone can pass, look at that, okay. We did our Jeff.
I don't find other. Yeah, that's gotta be emphasized.
I don't, well.
With the graph that Sly was just pointing out, that. Our town with the tax rate dropped almost two percent.
Yeah, each time.
That that's gotta be the focus, the deliverers. Yeah.
Yeah, so it wasn't really. She's saying.
It never was.
It really truly is, but we blended in before this being part of the process, not for not.
So there's something we can.
Yeah, Michael has a beautiful power, finally, they put it together.
I think that's what he called it last year. And the other page hand, that for another, very probably, um I'd provide, these are, these were the numbers, these are my cheat sheet on. All the revenues and all the um fund balance year over year, so you guys all have it now, so this is what, this is what we've retained.
It's thirty one.
Thirty one, yeah, it is, well, I can email you the actual Excel version, but we can see what's gonna fly here over here.
Are you on the next last page?
Yes. Oh, no, thirty one.
Oh, that's fair.
You're on someone's, oh, right, Billy, oh, I know. New film, where's she working?
Oh, yeah, I did look at that.
What are you looking at, Billy?
Oh, mine's not numbered, so I should.
Need the staple out?
No, we didn't parse this, like, I.
Billy, you do what you want, that?
Yeah, yeah, oh, cause they printed out what you sent us.
That's what. No, but that wasn't numbered. It was like a thirty at night, you wanna me to number it then too?
So explain to me what I'm looking at, for jobs, this is all, so.
Year to year.
Off, over the top, you got the years.
Yep.
So twenty fifteen, the last ten years.
Yep.
Then down the left side, you have the revenue sources, so land use change tax, timber taxes, motor vehicle. Those are all the different.
The word changes in there, so when you, when you look at it, that's the penalty that people pay.
Oh, I see.
One point seven, so like.
It is weird if you're looking at some of the year.
Something's, something's not right about that, Michael.
Which one?
The land, the land use change tax.
A thousand dollars down the end.
Isn't that the?
At its twenty every year.
Isn't it coming out, isn't that what the penalty they pay when they pull out of the current use?
Correct.
It's gotta be more than a thousand bucks.
Oh, it's, it's what we budget, this is only what we budget.
Oh, okay.
How does that work, like, cause my land isn't coming, use the park.
So we're gonna hit you. Ten percent of fair market value.
Ten percent of. You guys are just gonna tuck it right to me.
So that's, what's that property worth, two or three million, so.
Thirty five thousand.
Yeah.
Look what happens.
But the main. Select minute, he kills us with taxes.
So that, no, I'm gonna, go back to this, go back to this. So two thirds of the way down, fund balance to reduce taxes, you guys see that one? Jimmy? Right where they start getting bold. Okay, yeah, so five forty five, five fifty seven.
Yeah.
Four sixty four, so we were pretty consistent, worked it down, one fifty, ninety, and then we've been working it back up. Till this year, which we're now we're at one point one million, so my warning is to, we need to work to get that back down, it could be overtime, but.
So the lower the better.
Well.
It should be an easy fix if everything comes online, April first next year. When, when it'll be online.
Yeah.
So with any luck, we'll get that MS one up enough to.
Right, that's, yeah, right, we'll budget something and then when we get the MS one, we'll wanna try.
That was where they were.
Extra hundred million dollars worth of state.
What was the maximum?
Fifteen, seventeen, it's at the bottom, seventeen or ten, it's the two bottom.
So that's what you were.
So what did you say, we're at the sign tomorrow, the, uh.
The warrants. If anyone's still watching, what's the tax rate, nineteen oh six?
So who's gonna assign to agree that that's gonna be the tax?
Well, you already did the tax rate, so the tax rate's been set, then the warrant, so we enter in the tax rate into the. Tax warrant and it calculates whatever one's tax bill is gonna be, that's what you sign up.
I got you.
Fifteen forty five for the precinct.
Your portion went down a lot, it used to be like sixty cents.
Yeah.
It's a job.
Look at the valuation, we're getting seventy four million.
Is that thanks to the uh precinct expanding too? Did that help or was that last year?
Can I?
Yeah. Make a motion. Um, will we go public? Are you making, you gotta make a motion, then I can stop the, we've been recording this the whole time, forget.
Do you have, so before we go off, before we go off.
Yes.
The recording. The, the whole concept of of signage for the covered bridges, I think we we've gotta really explore being. More proactive and more confrontational. Uh I've become more and more observant of them now that I've gone over them.
Now that you're in Swansea Center.
Well, cheepers creepers, so it it seems to me that we we need to just let the state know. That we wanna put signage on their signs, so nothing in tow. Instead of, instead of having it ten feet from the bridge, you see it a quarter mile be- before you get there. But we, th- this whole thing with cameras, if I understand correctly, we're being held up because of signage.
They won't answer.
Right, so the hell, we're, we're, we're gonna do it, we, we, this is, we've got serious issues with, with, we have. We, we want another room of people, thirty, forty people, you see how many people that respond to her on on Facebook when she, like the. The, the car trailer that that went through last Saturday.
Yeah.
Holy cow, and and they, they caught him at Fairfield's or something.
He didn't read English.
Is that what it was?
Yeah.
So, and then this, the school bus, th- there was a reply from first student that. They, they don't send any of their buses over it, so it had to been um, uh, La Tonya, their, their bus that went over. I, I, I think just, we, we're being made aware of it and someday there's gonna be an accident, so I think we just. Take the bull by the horns and we start putting signs up.
I do too.
All right, who's calling the D P W director?
I'll, I'll talk to Frank.
When Kelly comes back. It's not Frank's.
No, 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 we're talking about Joe, Joe signs and then letting Frank find out about it when he tries to. But they do, they allow some riders on their signs as you, as you go by, not all of them, but.
That's what they call riders?
I don't know, that's what we call, but.
Riders are riding along.
Free, free riders.
Free riders, but, but again, on a serious note, I can understand why somebody, all of a sudden you get to the bridge. Like which one was Carlton Road, you don't see the nothing in tow until you're literally a right. There's nothing you can do, uh so we, we could take care of our own bridges a little bit sooner, this one down here, if I'm not mistaken.
There was a sign on the Route thirty two or whatever, it says covered bridge on there. We could throw nothing in the hole about it.
That's. So that was that.
His or yours?
Or his.
Or yours, yours, me.
You have one?
Four. So what's the first one on the, Michael, what do you want to down to?
C for reputation.
C, okay, I'm wanting to make a motion, we're going to non-public under C, second.
Here's it's getting, well, come best of.
So you're impressive, my trauma.